All right, very good. Well, good evening, everybody, and good to see you again this week. And it is December 7th, 2020. This is a special meeting of the Edina City Council. We're going to deal with some road reconstruction projects. It is 6:02 PM on Pearl Harbor Day, December 7, 2020. And before we call the meeting to order, again, I want to welcome everybody to the meeting. This meeting is being held electronically to comply with the Governor's Stay Safe Minnesota Order and also to ensure the safety of all of our residents and all of our staff. All members of the city council, the staff, and the presenters are participating from their homes or offices. But before we get started, there's a few things to cover for those listening in and for those on the call as well right now. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input on these two particular projects, proposed projects, through our council correspondence web form, voicemail, and our engagement website, Better Together, edina.org. All comments that have been submitted have been received and reviewed prior to the start of the meeting. You don't need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback, all communications to the council on these issues of importance to everybody will be considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. So tonight, we're going to have two times. You can call in by phone. There's a community comment portion on the agenda this evening, and there's also the public hearing matter that I discussed earlier. And we've got two public hearing matters tonight. One is a proposed, or one is a hearing on the proposed project involving the Creek Knoll A and B neighborhood. That's a roadway reconstruction project. And the second one involves what we call the Melody Lake A and B Grandview A Birchcrest C neighborhood, proposed roadway, roadway reconstruction project. So you might want to pay attention to this now. If you want to call in for either community comment or to testify in these public hearings, the 800 number is 374-0221, 374-0221. The conference ID tonight is 803-4569, 803-4569. In addition to listening to the broadcast, you can also watch it on live TV, the Edina TV channel, that's Comcast channels 813 or 16, facebook.com/edinamn and edinamn.gov/livemeetings. Those are different ways that this meeting can be watched. Manager Neil will be the timer. You'll have three minutes, whether you're talking to us in the form of community comment or during the public hearing. And Manager Neil will let you know if you go over the three-minute mark and then you need to get your remarks wrapped up. So we're not going to have to act on these public hearing matters tonight. We're going to hold them over, keep the public hearing open so that you can provide further testimony until noon on December 9th. And then any proposed action tonight will be that the council will deal with these issues on December 15th at its regular council meeting, December 15th, 2020. So have that confidence too, that you know that if you can't testify tonight, you can still submit further comment and communication to the city council, either online at bettertogetheredina.org or you can call 952-826-0377 and leave us a voicemail there. So thanks in advance for your patience as we work to conduct this meeting online using different types of software. And we've got almost 20 people working from their homes or other different places. We hope, of course, there won't be any issues, but if there are, we'll try to fix them as quick as we can. So let's open up the hearing or the meeting, the city council meeting. And Clerk Allison, would you roll call for us, please, or conduct roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Brindle?
Here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next matter on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have a form of meeting agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to modify the meeting agenda or the city manager? If not, entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Member Brindle moves.
Approved.
Second.
Member Fisher seconds. The approval of the meeting agenda. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to approval of the meeting agenda.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The form of meeting agenda is approved. And now it's time for community comment. If you wish to address the council about something that's not on the agenda this evening, remember if you're calling in on these roadway reconstruction projects, we're going to get to those momentarily, so don't jump the gun there. If you want to talk to us about something else that's not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing, feel free to call in, and this is your time for community comment. And I'll turn it over now to Director Benarott because she is watching the queue. And remember, you need to press star one to get in the queue, as I recall, but I think Director Benarott will go through some of those technicalities here so he makes sure everybody has a chance to speak. Director Benarott?
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and members of the council. We have a number of people who have dialed in for tonight's conference, but I do not have anyone at this moment in the queue to speak. As a reminder to those on the call to get in the queue to speak under community comment, please press the asterisk, then the number one on your telephone keypad. That's star one. That will get you in the queue to speak, and then I will introduce you. There is a slight delay in the broadcast between what's happening live and what people see on Facebook or cable television or our own city website. So I would recommend we wait a minute or so to give people a chance to call in for community comment and then get in the queue to speak. My clock shows that it's 6:08 PM. I'll actually just turn 6:09, so I will watch for the queue. And if anyone enters, I will let you know. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to you at 6:10. And I do not have anyone in the queue at this moment, so I think you can move on with your meeting.
Thank you very much, Director Benarott. Usually, following community comment, the city manager will comment on comments from our fellow citizens the meeting before. We just had our city, regular city council meeting on December 1st. Manager Neil will deal with those comments on December 15th. So we will not have Manager Neil as part of the reply to community comment on this portion of the agenda this evening. So that allows us to move right into the public hearing phase, the work that we determined we would do, and this has been our practice now for the last couple of years, to have a special time early December where we can have a city council meeting that devotes itself to proposed roadway reconstruction projects. And the first matter we have in front of us this evening of the two that we're going to discuss is embodied in Resolution 2020-129, and that is the proposed roadway reconstruction project for what we call the Creek Knoll A and B neighborhood, and that's embodied in improvement number BA-459. And our director of engineering, Chad Milner, will briefly introduce this, this matter, and we will ask questions, and then we will turn it over to the public for their testimony on this particular matter. So Director Milner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we'll give a little introduction, as has been customary, to kind of cover the topics that span both projects here tonight. So as the mayor mentioned, we'll have two public hearings tonight. First, I wanted to thank the mayor and city council. I want to thank the staff that it takes to put together these meetings because this is a special meeting every December when we're all very busy. So I just want to thank everybody involved to be able to put on this meeting and talk about infrastructure projects. And we'll talk about general schedule, we'll talk about the assessment policy, talk about the benefits embodied in the rules of the state statute, Chapter 429, and talk about restoration items, and then the bike pad master plan. Why my street? So tonight, we'll discuss two neighborhoods. These are circled in purple. The first one will be Creek Knoll, which is in the northeast part of Edina, adjacent to Minneapolis. The other one's right in the center of Edina. It's Melody Lake. And we merged two projects together. That was supposed to be a two-year project. There was a petition from residents, and we're going to do it, propose to do it in one year. But it's really to continue with our proactive event management plan, management program. Streets are grouped in neighborhoods. That maximizes the economies of scale, and we can extend that pavement life within similar streets within a similar area. And our projects are based on the pavement condition, the original construction age, what we're seeing for those underground utilities, and then all of our transportation goals and plans for the future. The lines rule well with city goal number one, to maintain physical assets and infrastructure. And those are the multimodal transportation network, roads and sidewalks, and the bike facilities. These projects provide clean and safe drinking water, sanitation, and stormwater services in the flood and drainage service, and also clean water. The structure projects are very important to all of Minnesota, and it's not just Edina. And in 2018, the American Society of Civil Engineers gave Minnesota a grade of a C. So we're asking our legislators to continue to make decisions about funding and make it a priority for infrastructure. And they're telling us they're not hearing from constituents. So I'd like to make that plea to our residents that are listening in to tell your legislators the importance of infrastructure, because we can raise this grade together. The projects are divided into maintenance groups. The groups are based on the original platte with similar-sized lots. So we use the neighborhood naming convention for the main label. Then we divide these neighborhoods into groups A, B, and C. Because they're just too big to do all at once, we break them into these little pieces that we can afford every year, and that makes sense. Not only are we talking about the streets and sidewalks and cost tonight, but I'd like to make residents aware of all the infrastructure that's under the ground, under those streets. We have over 200 miles of drinking water supply pipes, over 200 miles of sanitary sewer pipes, 130-some miles of storm sewer, and many other pieces of infrastructure such as water towers, lakes and ponds, and water treatment plants. pavement condition index. So this is a graph of where our average PCI value has been the last 10 years. You can see we kind of bottomed out in 2012 and 13 with a 51. Our goal is to get into that good range, and you can see it's been gradually increasing in pavement quality. We inventory the city every quadrant once every four years to see where we're at with our average pavement condition index. Also happens with many of these projects is we shrink the streets slightly with every project, and we improve the stormwater management of the city. So in the last five or so years, we've reduced the amount of impervious by over five acres. That's really a benefit to clean water service, the cost of maintenance, the cost of the construction. It's really a benefit to shrinking those street widths where they're not needed. I mentioned tonight, the projects we'll look at is Melody Lake and Creek Knoll. There's 113 properties in Creek Knoll and 299 properties in Melody Lake. We call those resident petitions. So the residents petition to do Melody Lake in one year. It was supposed to be, we had originally scheduled it over 2020 and 2021, and we agreed with the residents and offered to move that into one construction season. Then Creek Knoll petition to actually have their streets done sooner. So we moved that up in the queue so we could get that project area done sooner. General schedule is public hearing tonight. If projects get approved on December 15th, we would do construction in 2021. And that final assessment hearing would not occur until October of 2022, with these assessments starting to be published on tax statements in 2023 for the impacted properties. Assessment policy assigns benefit to the public improvements to the benefiting properties, and that's a condition of the state statute. Edina's assessment policy covers 100% of the construction costs are borne by those adjacent properties. And those costs are roadway and driveway removals, subgrade materials, the asphalt pavement, and then the restoration items, which entail retaining walls, landscaping, seeding, and driveway pavement. Also includes indirect costs, engineering, finance, the soil investigations, and mailings. Final assessment amounts, like I mentioned, would not be completed and considered until the fall of 2022. And at that time, there's some payment options. You can pay the entire amount upon receiving that invoice, can pay a portion of it, and then the balance rolls over to your property's tax statement over 15 years. Or you can roll the entire amount over 15 years on your property tax statement. There's also an option to defer that payment if you meet certain age and income requirements. Benefit question of statute, Chapter 429. This evening, we had NAGL appraising complete general benefit letters. Each project tonight has those letters completed, and there's a range of benefits realized by the street reconstruction. And we'll go into those details during each individual project. Restoration, we know we're going to impact irrigation system and pet fences and landscaping. And currently, those are repaired as part of the current assessment policy. It would be, be part of these construction projects. I'd like to take a little time just to remind the council about our pedestrian and bicycle master plan and the guiding principles behind that. We'll have some discussions tonight about the sidewalks on both projects. So the plan was really built with a use of for all ages and abilities approach. So we want to provide safe routes for all. That's in a lens of accessibility and equity. So not all of our residents are comfortable walking in the street or using the street as, as for walking or biking or running. Some individuals have certain disabilities and just are not comfortable out there. We're also trying to provide our facilities for the most people and the most abilities, really providing that equitable service to our community. The plan also developed facilities and to address gaps. So we got to keep in mind, this is a community-wide network. We want to build that network so people have opportunities to use that. We want to have connectivity for everyday uses and needs. So we want to connect schools, neighborhoods, and parks, and we'll provide some details of that. And we also want easy and convenient access and reduce those car trips whenever we, whenever possible. We also learned some things from the Quality of Life survey. So the recent survey asked our residents to write their own world words, what they like most about living in Edina. And out of those respondents, 40% wrote the convenience, accessibility, and walkability of Edina. And then what destinations, the bottom-left chart, what destinations did they prioritize when deciding where to improve conditions? And they told us to look at schools, parks, and residential neighborhoods. And then what's the other question on the bottom right is what keeps people from walking in Edina more often? The top two answers there were there are no trails or sidewalks where I want to go, and I feel unsafe around motorized traffic. Just wanted to remind the council too about some past difficult sidewalk discussions that we've had. Recall 58th Street, that was constructed this year, and we're getting comments already about that project and the success, success of those sidewalks. We call it Cornelia Drive sidewalk and how the people accepted that one after the fact and really are using that quite often. And then Valley View Road, just south of the Melody Lake project, where we installed that sidewalk after the original street reconstruction project. With that, I'd stand for any questions on the general hearings. Information provided? If not, we can ask Assistant City Engineer Aaron Ditzler to start with the Creek Knoll project.
All right. Are there any questions of a general nature for Director Milner? All right, let's get Mr. Ditzler to work.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is, my name's Aaron Ditzler. I'm the Assistant City Engineer. Mayor, council, staff, and residents, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. We're going to review with you tonight the proposed roadway reconstruction improvements for the Creek Knoll A and B neighborhood. On the screen is the location map. Creek Knoll A and B is bordered on the west by France Avenue, on the north by West 54 Street, on the east by Zenith Avenue, and on the south by Minnehaha Creek, just south of West 55th Street. There are 113 City of Edina properties. West 54th Street is the border between the cities of Minneapolis and Edina. Minneapolis on the north half, Edina on the south half. There's 1.31 miles of road, over 16,000 square yards of street pavement, eight existing fire hydrants, and 19 existing sanitary sewer manholes. And as Chad alluded to in his kickoff PowerPoint, property owners petition to get this project moved up in the street reconstruction queue. All right, I'll dive into the utilities, starting with the water main. Project area is primarily ductile iron pipes. There are a few inch-and-a-half copper pipes. Some of the property owners are served by City of Minneapolis Water, who owns the water main on West 54th Street, as well as Abbott Place. Acoustical technology was used to assess the integrity of the water main and found the pipes are in fairly good condition. This correlates to the relatively few water main breaks. The fire hydrants are original and not to the city standard, and the gate valves are nearing the end of their useful life. We are proposing to replace short portions of the water main at West 55th Street and Beard Avenue and their associated water services. We're also proposing to replace undersized copper main in the Ewing Circle cul-de-sac. We're going to place all the gate valves and upgrade the hydrants to the city standard with the stores coupling for quicker connections by the fire department. We're also going to verify appropriate hydrant spacing and add hydrants if necessary. I will have potential replacement of all the water services. We are competing for budget with a lot of significant water improvement projects in the capital improvement plan. We are proposing a six-inch water main under Minnehaha Creek, linking the water mains between the Creek Knoll neighborhood with the Chauvin Park neighborhood. This installation will be done by trenchless method underneath Minnehaha Creek. This improvement is to support fire flow and improve water quality and add some redundancy to the system. All the water main improvements will be paid for using the Water Utility Fund. Sanitary sewer, the clay pipes are in fair condition. Inflow and infiltration is occurring in the system. There are some localized sanitary sewer pipe defects. These were confirmed via public work staff televising the mains and reviewing the video to determine those pipe defects. The majority of the problems are root intrusion and encrustation. Proposed sanitary sewer improvements, we're going to propose spot trunk pipe repairs, as well as install cured-in-place pipeliners to reduce infiltration and provide a structural pipe support to the old host clay pipe. We're also going to be replacing manhole castings and rings to reduce inflow. All these proposed improvements will be paid for using the Sanitary Sewer Utility Fund. Last utility I'll discuss is storm sewer. The city considers curb and gutter a storm sewer drainage component. Roughly 60% of the streets do not have curb and gutter. The project area includes PVC and reinforced concrete pipes and very few storm sewer inlets south of West 54th Street. Localized surface drainage issues are present, which were verified by resident questionnaire The Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan identified areas of modeled flood inundation within the project area for significant storm events. The red shaded flood risk area between West 54th Street and Fuller Street, east of Drew Avenue, shows a handful of homes could be impacted by a 1% annual chance flood event. We are proposing modifications to the roadway and storm sewer network to improve drainage issues, specifically increasing the street grade to improve drainage where warranted and feasible, as well as extending storm sewer in certain locations. We're also going to be installing curb and gutter where no curb exists today. We're proposing to replace existing curb and gutter due to poor condition, as well as the installation of sump drains in storm sewer in certain locations. We are proposing to install a sump drain pipe where warranted and feasible. Residents will have the opportunity to connect their sump pump line to the sump drain pipe buried behind the curb and gutter. To address the flood inundation area shown in red, it's proposed to extend storm sewer pipes from Minnehaha Creek, north on Beard Avenue, and west on Fuller Street. Although a storm sewer extension to the depression shown in red is not proposed with this project, proposed storm sewer pipes on Fuller Street would allow for a connections to the backyards in the future if necessary. The storm sewer improvements will be paid for using the Storm Sewer Utility Fund. Final storm sewer note, the city of Minneapolis also proposes some partial storm sewer replacements to their system on West 54th Street, which will be paid for by the city of Minneapolis. All right, let's talk about the roadways. Streets were originally constructed primarily between 1930s and the 50s, the exception being Ewing Circle, constructed in late 1970s. The existing street widths vary between 28 and 35 feet wide. Underneath the asphalt and gravel are primarily sandy soils. As part of the proactive pavement management program, each street is rated regularly over every four years to determine its condition and assign a pavement condition index number. A brand-new street is rated at 100, and a completely failed or gravel street is rated at zero. As Chad mentioned, the Edina City Street Network average is 72. The Creek Knoll A and B neighborhood average is 23. Proposed roadway improvements, we are proposing to grind the pavement and gravel underneath and mix it together, resulting in a recycled gravel product to be used underneath the pavement. Subgrade corrections will be done as needed. We're not anticipating a lot of subgrade corrections in this neighborhood due to the sandy soils, but there may be some. We're also going to be doing a new roadway section, including asphalt pavement surface. Twenty-seven-foot street widths are proposed with no changes to the parking availability. Exceptions to that are Beard Avenue. We're proposing 24 feet wide with parking on only one side due to proposed sidewalk. Ewing Circles, curb and gutter will remain in place. Therefore, no street width is proposed. And West 54th Street, we're planning on matching the existing width. Talk about that a little bit more now in detail. We have been coordinating our proposed improvements with the city of Minneapolis. Minneapolis proposes more of a maintenance strategy. They're going to be doing minimal curb replacement on the north half, just spot curb replacements as necessary. They're also going to mill off just the top surface and replace with new asphalt pavement. Redina's south half of the street will do a full reconstruction, as I mentioned on the previous slide. West 54th Street, east of France Avenue, is designated as a neighborhood slow street. West 54th Street, east of France Avenue, is designated as a neighborhood slow street. Fifteen-foot traffic circles were installed at the intersections of Beard Avenue and Drew Avenue back in 2012 as part of a traffic calming project. We're proposing no changes to these traffic circles as they have reduced the average speeds on West 54th Street since implemented. That speed reduction's been about five miles an hour since implemented. Based on the existing traffic circles, as well as Minneapolis protecting their existing curb and gutter on the north side, we're proposing no change to the street width for West 54th Street. Of note also, staff recommends not replacing the bike boulevard pavement markings on the street due to lack of adjacent bike facilities. Twenty-seven-foot and 24-foot street widths are design guidelines in the city's Living Streets Plan. The benefits of these widths are less impervious surface. We've reduced over five acres of surface, impervious surface since 2008. Stormwater management, the less impervious surface, so less stormwater getting into drainage systems and into lakes and wetlands. Traffic calming, reduced lifecycle costs. These streets will be maintained periodically for the next 50 to 60 years after street reconstruction is complete. So that lowers the cost of pavement maintenance. Twenty-four-foot street width is proposed on one side of Beard Avenue due to a proposed sidewalk. Parking is proposed along the sidewalk side for pedestrian safety and general comfort of having the parked cars provide a buffer between motorized traffic. The pedestrian facility plan for the citywide network was updated in 2018 with the addition of Beard Avenue in the Creek Knoll neighborhood. The bike and pedestrian plan was approved at a public hearing in 2018 and incorporated into the comprehensive plan. There are some existing sidewalks in the area. Sidewalk on the north half of West 54th Street in the City of Minneapolis. Minneapolis sidewalks are shown in blue. There is a sidewalk stub on the north side of the Speedway Convenience Store, east of France on 54th Street, shown in red. There's a sidewalk on France Avenue between 54th Street and Fuller Street, shown with the solid red line, as well as a sidewalk stub on Fuller Street, east of France Avenue, in front of the St. Peter's Church. There's also a pedestrian bridge at Minnehaha Creek, south of Beard Court and West 55th Street. Proposed sidewalk, there is proposed sidewalk on France Avenue, five foot wide with a five-foot boulevard proposed on the east side of France Avenue. That's showing the red dashed line between Fuller Street and West 57th Street, south of the project area. This sidewalk may be constructed with Creek Knoll A and B project, or it may be a separate contract to be determined this winter. The sidewalk will connect to existing sidewalks on West 54th Street, as well as the sidewalk constructed this summer and fall at West 57th Street and France Avenue. Sidewalk will improve pedestrian access to Metro Transit's future E-line bus rapid transit service on France Avenue. Construction of that E-line may begin as early as 2023. Because France Avenue is a county road, snow plowing for this sidewalk will be completed by the city. Beard Avenue proposed sidewalk, as I mentioned, the roadway is proposed at 24 feet wide, posing a five-foot wide sidewalk with a five-foot boulevard on the west side of Beard Avenue. Sidewalk will connect to the pedestrian bridge over Minnehaha Creek, as well as sidewalks on West 54th Street. I'll discuss the future sidewalks in the upcoming slides. Sidewalk is proposed on the west side because it minimizes conflicts with CenturyLink fiber optic utilities and underground vaults on the east side of Beard Avenue. It also aligns with the proposed draft cul-de-sac geometry shown in the graphic. The existing cul-de-sac shape is shown in red with quite an irregular shape. We are proposing a draft circular cul-de-sac design, which does help with street maintenance and snow plowing. So the sidewalk would continue along the west side of the Beard Avenue, or, excuse me, the Beard Court cul-de-sac. Another reason is there's far more properties to the west of Beard Avenue than there are to the east of Beard Avenue. Because Beard Avenue is not a county or municipal state aid roadway, nor is it included in the city's active routes to school plan, the adjacent property owners would be responsible for snow removal. Engineering and City Council received a written petition against the Beard Avenue sidewalk. The properties that signed the petition are shown in green. Although a number of residents oppose the sidewalk, engineering continues to recommend the sidewalk for many of the reasons Chad brought up earlier. I'll just, I'll review those again now. The pedestrian bike plan, master plan is part of the comprehensive plan. There's three guiding principles, uses an all ages and abilities approach to provide safe routes for all all ages, including adults, children, seniors, all with varying abilities. It also includes an approach to those who are not currently walking or biking the city today. Staffs observed 422 pedestrians on a daily count on Beard Avenue between 54th and 55th Street this summer. That number certainly could increase with the addition of a Beard Avenue sidewalk network. And as Chad mentioned, a couple of top reasons preventing people from walking more often. Number one, no sidewalks or trails where I want to go. And two, I feel unsafe around motorized traffic. Second guiding principle is the plan develops facilities and addresses gaps. Building the network is important. It might not be important to some of the adjacent property owners in the neighborhood. Sidewalks are important to the community and network as a whole. The proposed sidewalk is a continuation of the pedestrian bicycle master plan implementation that's already begun south of the project area. Creek Knoll is shown, the neighborhood is shown with a green rectangle. The sidewalks have already been constructed along Beard Avenue, south of the project limits, between West 62nd Street and West 58th Street, as shown in orange. It also formalizes an additional north and south route, reducing time utilizing either France or Xerxes Avenue, so helping to address a north and south gap. Future sidewalks are proposed along Beard Avenue, south of the project area between West 58th Street and the pedestrian bridge at Minnehaha Creek. Upgrading the pedestrian bridge crossing at Minnehaha Creek to ADA compliance is a goal in the future. The last guiding principle is connectivity for everyday uses and needs. Safe walking and biking networks that connect to everyday destinations like parks, neighborhoods and schools is important. The network makes it easy and convenient for more people in Edina to choose walking and biking for their transportation and mobility needs. There's a number of neighborhood parks adjacent here. We've got the Strakauer Park at West 62nd Street. We've also got Chowin Park, one block west of Beard Avenue and West 57th Street, as well as quite a large City of Minneapolis park just north of the project area. We've also got West 50th Street amenities as well. So to summarize the sidewalk recommendation, the sidewalk isn't only about the properties in front of the sidewalk or the adjacent streets, it's about connecting the community, providing safe, comfortable, equitable and accessible access, meeting the desires of all residents. Existing features along the roadway edge within the existing right-of-way include landscaping items, irrigation systems and pet containment fences, as well as outwalks and steps. Features like these may be disturbed by construction. If impacted, the current practice is to repair irrigation and pet containment systems. We'll also replace landscaping as well as steps and coordinate the impacts with the homeowners. So how much are all these improvements going to cost? The estimated project costs for the roadway, $1.77 million. The improvements are going to be paid for by special assessment. Sanitary sewer, $352,000. Water main, $678,000. This does include water service replacement, which may be removed from the scope of work depending on the budget. Storm sewer, just over a million dollars, just does include a concrete curb and gutter installation. The total utilities are just over $2 million. These will be funded by the city utility funds. The Beard Avenue sidewalk, $57,000, to be paid for by the pedestrian and bicycle safety or PACS fund. The total project cost, just over $3.8 million, which includes contingency, engineering, clerical and finance costs. Excluded in this summary are the City of Minneapolis improvements, which will be paid for by Minneapolis. Special assessments are proposed for this project and are assigned to benefiting properties of public improvements per State Statute, Chapter 429. 100% of the roadway costs for local streets are assessed to property owners per the current assessment policy. Roadway costs include roadway and driveway removals, the subgrade materials underneath the pavement. It includes the asphalt pavement, as well as the restoration behind the concrete curb and gutter. Also included are indirect costs, as I mentioned, engineering, finance, soil investigations and mailings. Just to reiterate again, not included in the assessments are sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, sump drain, curb and gutter and sidewalk. Those are excluded from assessment costs. Assessments are distributed based on REUs, which are residential equivalent units. A single-family residence has an REU of one, regardless of the lot size or street footage. There's different REU factors for different land use classes, used to compare properties to single-family residences. Scenario B are duplex units, which have an REU factor of 0.8 for each living unit. Scenario E includes commercial retail, which is 1.5 REU factor per 1,000 square feet of floor area. The Speedway Convenience Store falls into this category. Scenario I includes places of worship, which have an REU factor of 0.2 per 1,000 square feet of floor area. So how are these roadway assessments going to be distributed? Again, we have 113 properties proposed to be assessed. A single-family residence has an REU of one. These properties are shown in orange. Corner lots with only one side street in the project area will be assessed at 0.5 REUs with the current project. We've got two single-family adjacent to France Avenue, shown with the light blue. Factoring in the partial REUs and the REU factors for duplex properties, shown in yellow and green, as well as church properties, shown in purple, and the commercial properties, shown in blue. We get 115.77 REUs. So dividing the roadway project costs by the total number of REUs, we get an estimated roadway assessment of $15,300 per REU. Again, assessments are not final until after construction. There is a 15% construction contingency included in this estimate. So we do hope that this amount does go down. We did hire a licensed and qualified appraisal firm to determine preliminary market benefit for the neighborhood, Megal Appraisal Incorporated. Their full report is available on the Better Together Edina project webpage. They concluded that properties could see an average price benefit of $15,000 to $25,000 per single-family lot. Again, the estimated assessment of $15,300 per REU is within that preliminary benefit range. It's also in the range presented back in August 2020 in our video presentation. That range is $12,500 to $18,100. Again, let's reiterate these assessment payment options. The final assessment amount will be mailed to property owners one year after project completion, which is scheduled for fall of 2022. First payment option is pay the entire amount upon receiving the bill within 30 days to avoid future interest charges. Second option is pay a minimum of 25% within 30 days without interest. And the remaining balance rolls over to property taxes, spread out over 15 years with interest. The third option, roll the entire amount over to property taxes, spread over 15 years with interest. Of note too, you can defer payment if 65 years of age or older, and also meeting specific income requirements. Let's review the project schedule. Open houses were held in summer of 2018 and 2019. Property owners, due to COVID-19, a video presentation was prepared and uploaded to our Better Together Edina website for viewing in August this year. The Edina Transportation Commission reviewed the draft study at its meeting on October 22nd. This included our recommendations for the sidewalk improvements. Tonight is the public hearing. Council will hear testimony from its residents. The public can continue to provide input until noon on December 9th, and the hearing will close. At its regularly scheduled meeting on December 15th, the council will decide to move forward with the project or not. December through February would be preparing plans and specifications. Contractor bidding would occur in March and April 2021. Awarding a construction contract and construction beginning would occur in spring 2021. Instruction completion, fall 2021, and the final assessment hearing one year later, 2022. Staff's recommendation is that we believe the project is feasible, cost-effective and necessary to improve the public infrastructure. And we also want to reiterate the recommendation of the Beard Avenue sidewalk being installed with the project. And we recommend the council make a motion to close the public hearing at noon on December 9th and continue action on the item through its December 15th City Council meeting. That will conclude the presentation. I want to thank you, and I'm available for questions from the City Council.
Bear, you're on mute. Does anyone have a question for Mr. Ditzler?
I have one, sir. Could you bring up that picture of 54th Street that you had in your slide deck? I'm just curious, and I'm curious how you manage what Minneapolis is doing compared to what the City of Edina is doing in terms of utilities under the street. I'm assuming we don't have two sets of utilities under that street, or do we?
We do not.
I think you had it back there.
Here's one here.
You just zoomed by it. Go back, it was, it was actually, there was a a picture of the curbs on both sides. Sorry, I should have made that more clear.
Did I skip it again? Oops, I skipped it, sorry.
You had it before, you had some past it.
Here we go.
There you go, there you go.
So. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, well, what caught my attention is if you look at the Minneapolis side, there's quite a bit of curb showing. If you look at the Edina side, we're running out of curb. So is that a result of different layers of asphalt over the years, or what? What's causing that? Is that why we're doing a complete reconstruct over there compared to what Minneapolis might be doing on their side?
Yep, you can start, you can kind of see here, you can see the asphalt pavement matches in with the toe of curb. Pavement maintenance has occurred over on this side. You can, you can see that the gutter was maybe overlaid in the previous year here. So yeah, kind of differing maintenance strategies. You can kind of see the seam down the middle of the street, different strategies over the years. Forgive me, there is another question in there. Can you remind me?
Well, and also just underneath what we're not seeing, so I can see that we're running out of, it's kind of like when you're sanding your wood floors in your house, at some point, you can't sand anymore. This is kind of the reverse. It seems like we can't keep doing overlays, or we're going to be over the top of the curb. So I get, I can see that. The under-the-street utilities, so is it one set of utilities that's shared by both cities? How does that work?
Yep, so excellent question. There, there's, so this, there's only one sanitary sewer main on West 54th Street. That's owned by the city of Edina. There's only one water main on 54th Street. That's owned by the city of Minneapolis. There are storms, there's essentially a shared storm sewer network on West 54th Street that takes drainage from Edina and Minneapolis properties, or Minneapolis communities.
So if we get into repairing some of those utilities, is that just a shared cost thing then that happens?
Minneapolis is proposing no improvements to its water system. We're proposing to line the sanitary sewer. To my knowledge, there are not any connections of the sanitary sewer services in this area. There might be. I don't believe there'd be any cost sharing in that instance. As far as the storm sewer, there would be a cost share for respective drainage areas to the storm sewer system.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions at this point in time for Mr. Disler?
Yes, I. What?
Go ahead, Member Brendel.
Okay, thank you. I just need clarification because the engineering report says ewing circle would narrow to 27 feet. And Aaron verbally said that ewing circle would remain at 31 feet. So I want to clarify which it is.
Yep, good question. The there may be an error in the engineering study, that's a good catch. Ewing Circle was constructed in 1979. The curb's in pretty good shape, so we are proposing to keep the curb and gutter in place. So no, no change to the existing street width. I believe that street width is 30 feet today.
It says, it says, yeah, it says 31 in the report. That the existing width. The only thing I'll say to that is that on our project, we didn't change street width because it was thought that you wanted to preserve as much curb and gutter as possible. And a street is pretty hard on curb and gutter. So when you're trying to not damage it when you're working on a street, that is, that's a goal. It's not always reality. And so I guess I would, I would caution that I would go to 27 on that street because I think the end result is going to be that the curb and gutter is going to be damaged by the project. And so I would want you to consider that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Other questions, Member Stotin?
Yeah, I'm wondering, and on page seven of your report, and I think you had a slide on it, you showed this flood-prone area in the backyards of some properties between 54th and Fuller. And I think, Aaron, you mentioned in your report that it's, it is not being, it's not being connected to the storm sewer system, but there's the capability. So I'm wondering, that's the slide right there. So I'm wondering why it's not being connected, and that may be an answer that has to do with our basic protocols in these street projects. And if, if that's the case, then what is the option in the future to connect that? And then where does that water go?
So right now, this is just a depression. So it just, this neighborhood is sandy soil, so it likely just infiltrates into the ground. The reason it's not, storm sewer is not being extended is it is private property. There are no utility easements in this area. There could be utility easements in the, in the future where we would, and there's no storm sewer on Fuller Street today, but we are proposing on extending storm sewer. So at any time in the future, a fairly simple extension of the storm sewer back to this depression would occur if necessary.
So if those four property owners thought that there was enough of an issue, they could communicate with the city and connect to that storm sewer main?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, good question.
Member Anderson, any questions for Mr. Disler?
Yes, just a very brief discussion, Mr. Disler, if you don't mind. On Beard. Do you have a slide there by any chance that we can get to?
Yes.
That's, that's good, thank you. So on Beard, we're gonna, that, that street will go to 24 feet.
Correct.
Yeah, and so the petition that we have in hand is to not replace this, not to place sidewalks. The, the street's going to be 24 feet, regardless of whether there would be a sidewalk or not. Correct?
No, i- if no sidewalk, if the sidewalk would be eliminated, we would propose a 27-foot street width for Beard Avenue.
I see, okay, all right. That answers my question. Thank you.
I would, I would maybe add one, if I may, Councilmember Anderson. I would say we may have agreeing with Aaron on 27, I would say we may consider 24 yet. If the sidewalk doesn't get approved for whatever reason, I don't want to preclude us from adding it in the future because it is part of the bike, ped master plan. So I think there, we still wouldn't know which way we would go yet. I guess we'd want to see which way the council decides on the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's helpful. And one of the goals in reducing the width of the street is to decrease impervious. And so I, I look at this and, and I can go back and forth and if there were no sidewalk, and if it's a 27 feet, then that might allow a little bit easier passage. With a sidewalk at 24, well, at 24 feet, if that's fixed, I would think that most people would want a sidewalk there. That's just far safer regardless. So I, I just want to be clear on that going forward, that's all.
And I would say another reason for 24 feet wide is now we're going to reduce those impacts on each side. So the existing street is 30, 31. We go to 24, the existing, this new sidewalk almost fits within those limits, just a few feet on each side.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that point?
You certainly can.
Chad, are we planning to, or Aaron, are we planning on keeping the center of the street the way it is if we put a sidewalk in, or would we would we move the center of the street east in order to create more room for the sidewalk on the west side?
I think typically, when we, when we propose a sidewalk, we the this total roadway and Boulevard and sidewalk would be roughly about 35 feet wide. So typically, we kind of try to balance the, the, if there's widening, we try to balance it on both sides, east and west. Would be ideal. And then we do kind of look at, if there's a significant amount of impacts to one side, we might consider shifting it to kind of balance those impacts out.
All right, so in any event, you're not wedded to the current center line of the street. You'll try to fit, you'll try to fit the street and the sidewalk infrastructure into what, what works with both sides of the street.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You could leave that slide up, Mr. Disler. I've got a question on Beard too. The existing width on Beard, is it 30 feet?
No.
It's actually, interestingly enough, it's, it's about 33 feet wide north of Fuller. So in this area here, it's about 33 feet wide. In this segment down here, south of Fuller, it's somewhere around 28 feet wide.
Okay. Yeah, you can sense that from being out there. It does feel narrower as you walk south. Member Brendel and I were out there on Saturday morning with some of the neighbors. I know Member Anderson was out there earlier. So for some other council members, like Member Fisher, saw that little stub of curb at one of the intersections. I don't know whether that was Drew or or Beard, but as you go south on Beard, and I don't know if the same thing is true on those other streets, there is no curb and gutter over there. It's not, they don't even have a surmountable curb in most places. Is that true?
It's true, there's no curb south of Fuller, but there is curb and concrete curb and gutter north of Fuller.
Okay.
Between Fuller and 54th.
All right. And then, so if we went to 27 feet on Beard, would you still allow parking on both sides of the street or just on one side?
Well, if we're going against the recommendation for 24 feet, and we would go to 27 feet, we would propose parking on, on both sides.
All right, thank you. Would you go to slide number 20, please? I got a question that popped up based on my site visit. There you go. So when you get down into Beard Court, you can see the way you've got it drawn for purposes of reconstruction and what the existing configuration is with that red line. To the top of the picture, I'll call, it's actually to the west, but it looks like it might be north on the photo, but to the top, there's an area of brush there to, to the right of the walkway over the, to get to the bridge over the creek. Is that private property, all private property, or do we own some of that property?
So if you can see my laser pointer here, this is the, this is the property owner, property line here. So everything in this area here is city right-of-way.
So it looks like in that right-of-way, we've tried to create over time some method for handling some stormwater coming in because it's all, it's all moving downhill towards the creek. I'm just wondering what your comments would be about water getting into the creek or effective stormwater management, or using that existing city right-of-way in some more effective way than is presently being used for stormwater management. What are your thoughts on that?
Right, so there's a severe lack of underground storm sewer south of West 54th Street. We are proposing to add underground storm sewer from the creek north on, through Beard Court, north on Beard Avenue and west on Fuller Street. We would eliminate these drainage swales in here now. We are going to be looking at, at a minimum. You know, there's not enough, not enough room in this right-of-way to do anything like ponding, stormwater ponds, anything like that. At a minimum, we would do some sump structures that would contain any debris in the storm sewer to prevent that from outletting into the creek. We could look at various different water quality structures. We'll also be doing that larger rock that prevents erosion into the creek bank as well. That's kind of our preliminary ideas in this area.
All right, so you eliminate the swell, and then do you bring that, bring that back up to grade or raise it a little bit at least, and then put the rock and other things in there? What's the strategy there?
Yeah, so, so overland drainage would get picked up in this cul-de-sac and put into a pipe, and then we would yeah, fill in that drainage swell and look at other erosion control options in here.
Okay.
As well.
Are you, are you comfortable with the, with the stormwater management strategies you got in place to protect those two homes that are on Beard Court, or three? Actually, there's two right on Beard Court, I guess. Because it seems to me like there's just a, in a, in a significant storm, 100, 500-year event, there's going to be a lot of water coming down Fuller, coming down Beard, heading for the creek, and to try to protect properties along the way. This is our chance to do it with a sufficient with an adequate strategy. Which is what we've been thinking about other places in our community too. So are you comfortable with the strategy we got in place?
Yeah, so there's probably somewhere around 15 acres of stormwater that drains, and again, there's no storm sewer, so it drains along Fuller east and in overlands, south on Beard today. So the majority of that drainage will be in stormwater pipes after the project is complete. We can certainly meet with the property owners as well to look at any other concerns and share those designs as well. So pretty comfortable we can be able to resolve those. You're right, that's a significant amount of overland drainage, even in low-flow events that would all cumulative come this way.
Good, yeah, I'm just thinking this is our chance to fix it as best we can. But I wanted to make sure we took advantage of that in our processes. I just want to get one verification too. When I look at Beard traffic data, it looks to me like, I don't know what the timing of this was. At the average, 164 cars a day, and the 85th percentile in speed is 21.3 miles per hour. Is that is that a pre-COVID measurement, or when was that measurement taken?
That was, that was done this summer. I want to say sometime May-June timeframe, so it was, it was during COVID.
During COVID, okay. All right, do we have any pre-COVID numbers for that street, or any of those streets?
Not that I have off the top of my head, no. I, I, I'm not aware.
Okay, all right. That's all I had for you, Mr. Disler. No questions for Director Milner. Anyone else have questions? Did that trigger anything for any other council members?
Not right now. I've got some more, but I, I think I'd like to go to the public hearing first.
All right, so we're now going to hear from residents who would like to provide testimony in this proposed street reconstruction project matter. And so I'm going to open it up for public testimony. So remember that some of you are in the queue already, but the number for those listening that want to get in the queue, 800-374-0221, 800-374-0221. And the conference ID number is 803-4569. I'm going to turn it over to Director Bennerott. And she's going to let you know how to make sure you get into the queue to speak if you want to speak. And then remember, you'll have three minutes. The manager here will be the timekeeper, and he'll let you know when you're at the three-minute mark and need to wrap up your comments. So Director Bennerott?
Good evening, Mayor Hublin, members of the council. We do have about a dozen people on the call right now, but only a handful in the queue. As a reminder, to get in the queue to speak, you need to press star 1 on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, and then number 1. That's the asterisk symbol and then number one. That will get you in the queue to speak. Um, we will start tonight with, with Jennifer Shadler. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Ms. Jennifer Shadler? Jennifer, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Uh, Jennifer Shadler. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thirty-seven oh nine West Fuller Street. I have a question and a recommendation. My question is, what year will the Beard sidewalk be completed from Fifty-Eighth Street to the Minnehaha Creek Bridge? Because I think if that were, if that would have been done already, the sidewalk conversation might be easier. So that's, uh, that's a question. And the second is, why wouldn't we add a sidewalk, um, on Fuller Street on the, uh, St. Peter side? Since there's half a sidewalk, why would we not have a sidewalk as long as we're doing all this work all the way down to Drew and then potentially from Drew to Fifty-Fourth? Um, I'll go back on mute. Those are my two questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Shadler. We'll call those questions.
Our next caller tonight is Ms. Terry Ford. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Terry Ford? Terry, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Terry Ford. I'm at thirty-five oh one West Fifty-Fourth Street and fifty-four hundred Beard Avenue. My question is, how are we going to handle all the snow that is pushed from the north side of Beard Avenue, which has currently been done by the plows in Minneapolis to the, uh, center of the street on West Fifty-Fourth Street? Because typically what ends up happening, the plows come down, they come down east on West Fifty-Fourth, uh, collect all the snow that, um, Minneapolis plows leave in the middle of the street and then push it on to my corner lot, which is fifty-four hundred Beard. The other thing is you're talking about putting a sidewalk on this side of the street. And by doing that, um, it, it leaves me no place to put snow. And I, it virtually will, when I shovel, will definitely, um, push it up towards the windows, leaving us no privacy whatsoever.
So Ms., uh, Ms. Ford, you, um, you say you're at fifty-four hundred?
Um, I'm, I have thirty-five oh one West Fifty-Fourth and fifty-four hundred. I'm the duplex on the corner.
Okay.
On the southwest corner. And you put in the, the roundabouts that doesn't allow anybody to get through. And I beg to differ that the traffic has slowed down because it was a lot slower when we had the stop signs then. Now I deal with all the snow from Minneapolis because they can't get around that roundabout. And then you're going to narrow the street. We, our buses can't even get around the, the roundabout. So now you're going to narrow the street and, and allow parking on our side of the street and put a sidewalk, which my, the distance be, from my stoop to the, to the curb is twelve feet exactly.
Okay. All good questions. Thank you. Anything else? Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next caller tonight is Amy Barger. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Ms. Amy Barger? And Amy, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Your line's not open. Hi, this is Amy Barger and I live at fifty-four oh five Beard. And, um, I think Aaron Disler may have some slides that he's able to show, uh, for my talk.
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Barger.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and start talking. I'm hoping Aaron will be able to pull up the stuff that I sent him earlier. I live on Beard, as I mentioned, in the Creek Knoll neighborhood. And me and another resident, Kenon Jaeger, spearheaded the petition requesting that no sidewalk be installed as planned on Beard Avenue from Fifty-Fourth Street to Minnehaha Creek. Um, I think Aaron is showing our cover letter now. And if you're able to, Aaron, cycle through the signature pages of the petition, that would be great.
Yep. He's got it up on the screen, Ms. Barger.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for everyone's responsiveness, especially to the council members who were able to visit our neighborhood and Aaron Disler, the assistant engineer, who also met with us. I guess the first thing I want to just point out or, or say is that we have unanimous support from the Beard Avenue and Beard Court residents for this petition to not install a sidewalk. As you will note from the other signatures, many of our neighbors and the broader community also agree with this. Aaron, if you're able to show, um, uh, slide one. Um, in the living streets plan for Edina, it's clear that safety and promoting community are important goals. And we support these goals and believe, but believe they already exist in our unique, uh, neighborhood. A rationale for asking for no sidewalk is outlined on, um, slide number one, which I don't know if we have up yet, but I'll keep going. Um, first, in terms of safety and walkability, we have three no-through streets which make it a very safe street. If any drivers who come through this neighborhood either live here or visiting or maybe, um, got lost as they were looking for a through street. And, um, if Aaron is not able to get to slide two, we were going to show the diagram of the neighborhood that shows the no-through streets in terms of Fifty-Fifth and Fuller, both dead end into Beard. Fuller actually turns into Abbott Place, which curves north into Fifty-Fourth. And then we are bounded on the south and the east side by the natural course of the creek. So it's, we're kind of an enclosed little, uh, neighborhood and, and very unique in that regard.
Thirty seconds remaining.
The engineering department traffic count was very low, as noted before. And, um, we also want to point out that we have concerns over the loss of green space by installing a concrete, um, sidewalk, um, that, that would relas- and result in loss of landscaping, large old trees. Um, and then I'm going to have to skip a couple of points for time. Um, precedent exists in other neighborhoods that have also successfully petitioned to not have sidewalks installed. The Wanita Indian Nolan neighborhood is similar to our Creek Knoll neighborhood in this regard. Um, and the last thing I'd like to say is just to have Aaron, if he can show the photos.
Stop your comments. I'm sorry. I let you drift over. We're trying to make sure everybody gets treated equally. So you'll have to, uh, stop right now.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Get the three-minute rule for a reason. Thank you.
We have more than a dozen callers on the line for this public hearing. Um, just a handful more in the queue. As a reminder, once you connect, if you'd like to get in the queue to provide testimony, you'll need to press star one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number one. That will get you in the queue to speak. Um, our next caller is Mr. Chris Soper. Operator, will you please unmute his line? And then Chris, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hi, uh, my name is Chris Soper. I live at thirty-five oh five West Fifty-Fifth Street. That's the lot adjacent to the strip of city-owned property on the west side of Beard Court. I'm a fairly new Edina resident. My wife and I moved in about a year and a half ago. I've spoken with, uh, Aaron and Charlie and I've been pleased with their responsiveness. And I'd like to thank them for that. Uh, I'd also like to express my objection to a sidewalk along Beard Court, south of Fifty-Fifth Street, and my objection to any enlargement of the concrete footprint of Beard Court for three reasons. First, as others have mentioned, the Beard Avenue pedestrian bridge is a very popular walking stretch. It is so because of the natural setting. Approaching the creek from the north, crossing Fifty-Fifth and entering Beard Court, one passes trees and grassland and the natural area along the west side of Beard Court until reaching the bridge. Then a pleasant stroll across the water, followed by a long flight of stairs up a natural hill. It's lovely. It's the namesake of the neighborhood. That is the Creek Knoll. Adding a sidewalk to Beard Court and expanding the concrete footprint of Beard Court as shown in the drawing would significantly reduce the green space and make that stretch much less pleasant. It would disturb the natural setting of the Creek Knoll. It would take away from the reason why the neighborhood is a popular walking route. I have to add that I recognize the stretch west of Beard Court has fallen into disrepair. It needs attention and overall, I'm glad the city is addressing the area. Thank you, Mayor, for your questions and comments on that particular stretch of land. My wife and I have been steadily removing invasive species like thorn and knotweed. There are fallen trees that need to be removed. We're digging out garden beds that must be ten or twenty years old. But that area should be restored to green or forested space as much as possible. We should retain the natural setting as much as possible while addressing storm drainage, as the mayor pointed out. But a sidewalk and additional paving on Beard Court would detract from that. Second, and I promise these get shorter, a sidewalk is not necessary at Beard Court for safety or convenience. There is no traffic on Beard Court. It's a cul-de-sac with only two driveways. There is no safety issue. Cars occasionally park in the cul-de-sac. There is room on the side for snow plowing in the winter. There is plenty of room for pedestrians to walk along the street and the street path leading to the bridge. That cul-de-sac essentially functions as a sidewalk because of its unique location. The street allows plenty of passage to the bridge. A sidewalk simply is not necessary. Additional expansion of the cul-de-sac is simply not warranted. Finally, I understand that responsibility for shoveling a sidewalk along Beard Court might fall to me. That particular stretch might not qualify for city shoveling. But that sidewalk would not be adjacent to my lot. It would not be in front of my house. Rather, I'd, I'd have to walk down the street and around the corner to shovel a portion of sidewalk that falls along a very popular path leading to the bridge. I understand sidewalk shoveling rules and debate over them, having moved to Edina from Minneapolis where I was a regular sidewalk shoveler. But the rules don't fit this particular stretch of sidewalk very well where the sidewalk is not directly in front of my house, not even close. And I bring this up not only because I don't want to shovel, although that's part of it, but also because the rule illustrates how unique this particular cul-de-sac and the area with the proposed sidewalk is. This cul-de-sac is bordered by a city-owned strip of natural area, leading to a path crossing a public waterway with natural areas on both sides of the creek. This cul-de-sac is different. It deserves a unique approach. It deserves to keep as much of its natural setting as possible. Please remove the Beard Court sidewalk from the plan. Please do not expand the paved footprint of Beard Court. Thank you for your consideration and for all you do for the city of Edina.
Thank you, Mr. Soper, and welcome to Edina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
Our next caller this evening is Molly Worst. Operator, please unmute the line of Ms. Molly Worst. And Molly, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hello, can you hear me? It's Molly Worst.
Yes, Molly, we can hear you.
Thank you. Uh, our address is three-five-zero-one Fuller Street West. However, our house faces Beard Avenue. And, uh, before I talk about our unique, um, situation, I just want to address some of the comments that were made by the engineers about, um, the, the benefits of the, the sidewalk, which we don't, we don't agree with. Um, I don't agree that a sidewalk along, uh, Beard Avenue will provide a safe route for all ages and abilities to cross, to, to meander the neighborhood. Um, it, Beard Avenue and, um, West fifty, uh, Fifty-Fifth Street dead ends at Minnehaha Creek. And over the creek is a bridge and stairs leading up a hill on the south side of the creek. This is not a pathway that's accessible to all presently and it won't be benefited by the construction of a sidewalk. This doesn't achieve the, one of the many benefi- or the, the missions of the, the city. Uh, this, or as I said, this is already not accessible to persons with disabilities. And we are about two bo- two blocks to the border of South Minneapolis. So the demand, um, in this corner of the, of the city of Edina for an accessible stretch between the creek and Fifty-Fourth, Fifty-Fourth Street is negligible. So, um, turning to our situation, our front yard faces Beard Avenue, as I said before. Our front door is approximately ten feet above street level. We, our, our yard is somewhat flat along the front of the house, but it drops sharply as it approaches Beard Avenue. So if a sidewalk is built into our front yard as proposed on the west side of Beard, a retaining wall will become necessary nearly the length of our yard as the sidewalk will cut into our hillside. We have an eighteen-year-old son who has Down Syndrome and is on the autism spectrum disorder. He has no concept of risk and will not understand the danger of stepping clu- too close to a retaining wall in our front yard and landing hard on a concrete sidewalk. The danger to our son by the proposed construction of the sidewalk on our property is unacceptable and simply not worth the risk. We also agree, and want to reiterate, our opposition to the sidewalk, uh, for the reasons set forth in the petition, the minimal car traffic, the fact that the pedestrians in this area are from the neighborhood and are accustomed to walking on the street. And, uh, the, the construction of a, a sidewalk will not benefit the community and it will not be a worthy, um, use of taxpayer expense. I thank the council and the mayor for hearing me and, uh, have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Worst.
As a reminder to those on the line, if you'd like to get into the queue, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Our next speaker tonight is Mr. David Priest. Operator, please unmute David's line and then David, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is David Price and, uh, my address is five-eight-one-six Hanson Road. And can you all hear me?
We can, Mr. Price. You might be, you might be, Mr. Price, you might be in early. This is not the hearing that deals with Hanson Road.
Oh, this isn't. Okay. I'm sorry.
No, you'll have to wait, uh, yeah, you're, you're, uh, curb your enthusiasm for another half hour or so. You'll have to come back. We're still working on the one over on the east side.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Our next speaker in the queue is Mr. Bill Fullerton. Operator, if you'd please unmute the line of Mr. Bill Fullerton. Um, and then Bill, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
All right. Hello, everybody. I am Bill Fullerton and I live at five-four oh five Beard Avenue South. And, um, I am an avid bicyclist and I walk or bike, um, every day, especially, uh, in these COVID times. Um, it has been, uh, I, I guess, uh, I want to thank you guys for the, uh, Edina master plan for pedestrians and bicyclists. In general, this is a great idea. Unfortunately, as it applies to our neighborhood, um, it doesn't apply as well. And the reason it doesn't is because none of our streets go through. Um, none of them go all the way through the neighborhood. The only one that does is Fifty-Fourth. And it takes a hard turn about a block into Minneapolis. And so I, I guess, uh, in this case, the, uh, sidewalk is, is not needed and it's not appropriate. So I would argue against it and, uh, that is basically all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fullerton.
Thank you.
We have one more person in the queue. So I would remind those on the call, if you would like to speak on this planning, this public hearing item, please press star one on your telephone keypad to get into the queue. Our next speaker is Ms. Lucy Close. I'm sorry if I'm, um, mispronouncing some of these names tonight. Operator, please unmute Lucy's line and Lucy, please begin by clearly stating your full name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lucy Claus. I live at fifty-four thirteen Abbott Place. I'm a fourth grader at Concord. I support the new sidewalk on Fifty-Fourth Street. I like to walk to the bridge across the creek. I wait for my bus on the corner of the street and I would feel safer waiting on a sidewalk instead of the street. I ask that you keep the new sidewalk in your plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Our next caller tonight is Kim Zander. Operator, if you would please unmute the line of Kim Zander. I would appreciate it. Kim, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Zander. We live at thirty-five hundred West Fifty-Fifth, which is, uh, basically the corner of Beard Avenue and Fifty-Fifth facing the court, uh, looking out towards the Walk Bridge over the creek. So, so we're very much opposed to the sidewalk for a number of reasons. And one of them, uh, I know one of the engineers talked about by moving the sidewalk over to the west side versus the east side was that affected fewer properties. And that's true, it does. But what it does do also at the same time is all four of these properties, these are effectively our side yards. My house faces Fifty-Fifth Street. Uh, the worst next door face, uh, Fuller or, or, uh, the court. We've, uh, these si- these sidewalks that the other residents brought up are going to be, I looked at your drawing, the, the picture of it, the sidewalk, it looks like you're going to have to relocate the utility pole further into my yard. And if that's the case, that sidewalk is going to be about fourteen feet from my dining room and living room windows. I have three big windows on that side of the house, which means we're going to have drapes up, uh, forever. Because we're going to have people literally walking through our home. home. So from a personal, private, and security issue, we really, really disagree with these sidewalks. We listen at length to the walkable community and all these wonderful goals. A short, little, two-block sidewalk that's cut off with a creek and about a 30-foot set of staircases to the south of us, I don't see how that connects to anything. We connect on Zerties Avenue, it cuts from Salt Hill all the way to Lake Bede and Moccasau. Likewise, on France Avenue, it just doesn't appear that there's any need for this little two-stub, two-block stub of a sidewalk, especially when it cuts in all these homes, narrows the street. It doesn't do anything for impervious surface because you're putting a pipe with sidewalk in, and concrete's impervious already, so you're not actually gaining on that green space area. We just don't see how this is going to really help in these goals, other than put a fairly unused sidewalk really, really, really close to four homes, mainly out of convenience sake. We've already got the power poles and fire hydrants in our yard, and now we're going to put a sidewalk there. So we're really not very happy about it. It just doesn't seem to fit in what the city's trying to do. And we're just not very happy. So we're very opposed to it, and that's what I have to say. So thank you for your time. I do appreciate it. Appreciate you listening, and we hope that it does not get constructed in the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zander.
Mayor Hublin, members of the council, I do not have anyone else in the queue at this time. I do have several other people on the call, though. So I would like to remind everyone, if you'd like to get in the queue, please press star one on your telephone keypad. That did prop someone to join the queue. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Ms. Jane Walsh? And Jane, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Jane Walsh, and I live at 5401 Beard. I am directly across Beard Avenue from Terry Ford, and I would just like to speak in support of her and the fact that her, the side of their house is very close to Beard Avenue, and with the sidewalk, that will force people, instead of walking down the middle of the street, to be closer to their home, kind of cutting out some of their privacy. And I do think that the removal of snow and having someplace to put it is a big deal for that side. Beard Avenue is nice and wide, people walk down the middle of the street. I'm a walker myself, and because it's such a short little piece of a neighborhood, I just don't think the sidewalk is necessary. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Walsh.
Our next caller is Carolyn Wilson. Operator, will you please unmute Carolyn's line? And Carolyn, please begin by clearly stating your full name and address for the record.
Okay, thank you. Carolyn Wilson, I'm at 3225 West 54th Street. This is a home that, at the end of West 54th Street, where the road ends and turns into Zenith Avenue, so it's the last home prior to that turn. My husband and I built our home, we were given, provided a building permit in 1977 to build the home, so I've been here a number of decades. And, you know, at the time we were given the permit, we dedicated a significant amount of land behind our lot that is now adjoined to the creek. The issue that I wanted to bring up is the storm drainage issue that has been insufficient within the area prior to, you know, running down the streets towards my property. And I don't see in the plan that there's any sufficient drainage on the side of my street between Abbott and Zenith. There is a storm drainage beyond my home on the street where the curve is, you know, between Minneapolis and Edina, and I believe that that storm drainage is Minneapolis property. So I met with Chad Milner in the fall, and I appreciate the help, and I have shared some of that information on how my property is affected by a lack of sufficient storm drainage to my lot.
Ms. Wilson, could you tell us how it's affected?
I have, any time that it rains, the water runs down my driveway. I've installed drainage in my driveway in front of my garage door, but the water pours down the side of my house, and I've had significant issues with cement, replacement of stairs on the side of my home and separating. I've had, you know, various issues with the driveway and the property, you know, losing kind of some of the stability due to the water.
Okay, so Mr. Milner knows what the problem is. Thank you.
He does, yep.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Mr. Brian Higgins. Operator, will you please unmute Brian's line? And then Brian, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record. I will note that Brian is currently the last person in our queue, so if anyone else is interested in speaking, please press star one. Brian, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Brian Higgins. I'm at 5501 Beard Court, so on the east side of the cul-de-sac, across the street from Kim Zander and Chris Soper, who spoke previously. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One, to attest, we have too young to often gallivanting the streets. We feel very safely and traversing up Beard Avenue to catch the bus to the local schools and feel very safe doing that without a sidewalk today. So we feel very fortunate to live in the neighborhood, be able to walk the streets very safely, and feel that we can do that into the future without a sidewalk on Beard Avenue. I also wanted to make a quick connection. You saw in the chart, or the graph and map earlier, that there is one home that looks like they do not support the plan in the chart, and that was Chris Soper, who spoke eloquently against the plan for a Beard Court sidewalk earlier. So that would be a unanimous viewpoint of the folks affected by the proposed sidewalk in the plan. Thank you very much for your time and for all that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Next caller is Kathy Hughes. Operator, please unmute Ms. Hughes' line, and then Kathy, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yes, you're on.
Hi, thank you. I'm Kathy Hughes, and I live at 5400 Beard Avenue South, and I'm calling in tonight to oppose the idea of sidewalks on Beard Avenue, Beard Court. However, whatever the city is proposing, I'm entirely against that. In living at 5400 Beard Avenue, I find that the street is amazingly quiet, it is very home-like. Because the kids come out of the creek, they walk up Beard Avenue after intertubing and whatnot, it's a very safe environment. And because they do utilize the street, there are no need, there is no need for sidewalks to be placed in our section. It's just kind of old home, salt-of-the-earth kind of neighborhood, and I'd like to see it kept that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Michelle Schelp. Operator, please unmute Michelle's line, and Michelle, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
My name is Michelle Schelp. My address is 5407 Abbott Place, and just wanted to share a quick testimony as to why we purchased our home here in January. We had been looking for years, the house we purchased sat empty for years, and we bought it because of the wide streets, the quiet neighborhood. It's a little gem of Edina that most friends who have since visited our home didn't even know existed. It's so safe. We have five kids. I let them all run around, bike around, and the sidewalks are, quite honestly, an eyesore, especially coming from Minneapolis. Just dealing with the buckling, I understand in certain areas and in the city, but being so close to the creek with all of the trees and the beauty, I just hate to see it turn into that. Again, I get it, in safety areas, but a lot of people have made really great points about no-through streets, less traffic. I think, you know, the ideas have already, or the reasons have already been brought up, but we also greatly oppose the sidewalks on Beard.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mayor Hublin, I have Chris Soper on the line again, if you're willing to take testimony a second time.
That wouldn't be usual for us to do that. Let's wait and see if anybody else testifies, and we can take some abbreviated testimony from him, if we don't have anybody else in the queue.
Okay. I do not currently have anyone else in the queue. Again, several people on the line, so if you would like to provide testimony, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Also, as a reminder to those listening, calling in tonight is one of three ways you can provide testimony to the city council. You can leave a voicemail for the city council, you can provide testimony at bettertogetheredina.org, or call in tonight using the conference ID and getting in the queue.
Yes, hold, Director Benarott, hold Mr. Soper there. I think that what we should be doing is making sure that we've given everybody an equal amount of due process, and I think that Mr. Soper still has the opportunity to send something in, because the motion is going to be to hold this public hearing open until December 9th at noon. So he still has the opportunity to communicate with us in a different way in case he forgot to mention something. But I don't think we should start a process here where we're allowing people to come back and testify at greater length than they were otherwise able to do with our three-minute rule, which would be putting them at a distinct advantage over somebody else that was being bound by the three-minute rule. So would you ask Mr. Soper to please submit his additional testimony in writing?
Will do. Our next caller tonight, then, is Kenan Jaeger. Operator, will you please unmute Kenan's line? And Kenan, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Kenan Jaeger. I reside at 5423 Abbott Place. I'm the corner house on Abbott Place, and my driveway in front of House Space, Beard Avenue. I also helped spearhead this effort with Amy, and sadly, the slides that she had to speak to were not available tonight. But be that as it may, I just really wanted to echo and in actuality recap everything that I've heard tonight and also through all the walking that we did, that our neighborhood as it stands is very safe and very walkable. We have three no-through streets, so it is quiet, you've heard that. We have been underneath all the benchmarks with low traffic volume and speed. You know, we're hoping the sidewalks do not end up being implemented because of loss of green space, loss of privacy, as you've heard, the sidewalks should be going through the yards and through the houses of people approximately 12, 15 feet from their dining rooms. We have fall risk involved with our disabled neighbors. There's been a precedent set with Gulf Terrace and Juanita and Indianola with unanimous support for no sidewalks. We have the same and broader support within our neighborhood and the project. But the one thing that you're hearing probably overwhelming is that, you know, we are a gem and a diamond of Edina, and we want to stay that way. Our streets are alive already with families biking and walking, playing catch, walking dogs, without the presence of that sidewalk. People appreciate that ability to walk side by side down the edge of our wide streets because it's safe, there's low traffic, and an inordinate amount of friendliness. And the likelihood, I think, of changing that neighborhood behavior when you can walk side by side down the street is likely low because it's existed for generations. So with that, I appreciate your time, and again, hopeful that you can see that we are already alive and a gem of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Jaeger.
Mayor Hublin, members of the council, I do not have anyone else in the queue at this point. As a reminder to anyone still on the call, I need you to press star one, that's the asterisk, then number one on your telephone keypad to get into the queue. Because there is a few-second delay between the WebEx and our live broadcast, I would recommend that we wait before moving on. In fact, that was enough time. Next, I have Brian Don Ford in the queue to speak. Operator, will you please unmute Mr. Ford's line? And Mr. Ford, please begin by clearly stating your full name and address for the record.
Hello, this is Brandon Ford, B-R-A-N-D-O-N, not Brian Don. I live at 3501 West 54th Street, and although I'm actually currently on international assignment, I'm calling in in support of my neighbor's petition against this sidewalk that's going in on Beard and Beard Court. I've been a lifelong resident in that neighborhood. I grew up in there in a house built by my great-grandfather that used to be a former corner grocery store on the corner of 54th and Beard. I just want to reiterate what's already been said in terms of changing the character of the neighborhood. As a child growing up in that neighborhood, I had the opportunity to play in the streets with friends, I had the opportunity to go play down in the creek. It was not a busy neighborhood, and I have not seen the character of that neighborhood changed in my 37 years as a resident in and out of that particular neighborhood. I would like to see that preserved going forward. As the previous caller had stated, it already has that family feel, that friendly Edina feel that you're trying to accomplish with these sidewalks. I think that the likelihood it damages that is much greater than what the goal is aiming at accomplishing in the first place. So I would hope that the city of Edina really listen to the residents and respect our wishes and decline from going forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Again, Mayor Hublin, members of the council, I do not have anyone in the queue at this point. To those on the line, if you'd like to get into the queue, please press star one on your telephone keypad, that's the asterisk symbol, then the number one. Because there is a slight few-second delay between our live WebEx and our broadcast, I would recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on. That gives people a chance to still call in and then get in the queue. My clock shows that it's 7:49. I will let you know when I have someone in the queue or 7:50, whichever comes first.
Thank you. Member Staunton, when you have to depart for this other matter at 8 o'clock or shortly thereafter, will you be able to rejoin us, or does it look like that's something that you'll be committed to for the balance of the evening?
I hope to be able to rejoin you. It shouldn't take that long, but it is difficult to predict how city councils might behave.
Yes, indeed. All right, thank you.
And in any event, if whatever part I miss, I'll be able to see after the fact. I'll listen back in to make sure I get all the testimony.
All right, understood.
7:50, and I don't have anyone else in the queue, so I think you may move on.
All right, thank you, Director Benarott. Well, this was our first public hearing matter, this matter this evening with respect to a proposed street reconstruction matter, and it was the Creek, Knoll, A and B neighborhood. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on this proposed improvement BA 459 at noon on December 9th, and then continue this action to the December 15th, 2020 city council meeting?
Some of.
Second.
A motion by a member Fisher, second by a member Brindle. Any further comments? Roll call, please, with respect to the motion. Clerk Allison?
It's Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle.
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hublin.
Aye. Motion carries, uh, the, the improvement proposed in BA 459, the Creek No A and B neighborhood proposed roadway reconstruction project, uh, embodied in Resolution 2020-129 will be kept open for public testimony until noon on December 9th, and then we will deal with the matter at our regular city council meeting on December 15th. Thank you, everybody, uh, for that, and now we're going to move on to the, uh, next public hearing and final public hearing matter of the evening involving a proposed street reconstruction project, and that is with respect to what we deem the Melody Lake A and B, Grandview A, Birchcrest C neighborhood, uh, project embodied in improvement number BA 457. And Director Milner, do you have some introductory remarks? I know that, uh, Mr. Gurk is proposed to handle this matter, but I thought you might have some introductory remarks.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I guess I wanted to ask one question on the previous. So, uh, years pass, we've kind of answered some lingering questions after testimony. So, did you want us to do that on the 15th for you based on these comments? Or how do you want to handle?
Yeah, I was wondering about that myself. I had a couple of, uh, questions written down. I mean, I guess for some folks that still might be on the line listening, it might be more advantageous to do it this evening, like Mr. Xander was wondering about power poles. Uh, how close were those power poles, were they going to have to be relocated and how would that impact him? That was one question.
So, yeah, me and, and Mr. Ditzer would be happy to answer a few of those questions, just to clarify that for everybody before you, you think about how to come back on the 15th. Um, Aaron, you want to take the first one on the power poles?
Yep, so I would say, uh, north of Fuller, um, unlikely we're gonna have to re, uh, relocate the power poles, maybe perhaps the one on the, uh, southwest corner of 54th Street, depending on, we're gonna do some, uh, truck turning movements, uh, design to make sure that, uh, with the narrowing of the street, we can, uh, continue to have, uh, larger vehicles traversing those traffic circles. So there's a possibility that one might get relocated for that reason. Uh, and south of Fuller, uh, those utility poles would, would need to get relocated back. And that's, uh, uh, understand utility poles are unsightly, nobody wants to have one in front of their, in front of the yard. Um, as far as constructability, uh, relocating utility poles happens on, on every project and isn't, isn't a huge concern constructability-wise.
All right, uh, and then Carolyn Wilson, uh, who lived at 3225 West 54th Street down near Zenith, uh, talked about her storm drainage issue near her property, and Director Milner, apparently she's met with her and have you, did that cause you to, to reassess some of the stormwater management issues that you might try to, uh, uh, better handle down near, uh, the, uh, Zenith end of this project?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, she's got a very interesting situation there with drainage, and we've met with her, we've noted it, and that would be a thing we'd really get into those details when we start design. So we think there's avenues to protect her property better, using some of those storm pipes that are right in the street in front of her house. So, yep, we, we made a note of that, we plan to do that during final design.
Okay. And then, of course, uh, early on, uh, Terry Ford talked about, uh, what happens to snow. Uh, she's concerned, so is Ms. Shadler, I think, um, uh, hardly handle snow removal, uh, everything kind of stacks up on the corner there where she is, and she's already got enough trouble without having to manage the sidewalk. Uh, snow shelving responsibility too. What are your, what are your thoughts, sir?
Yeah, uh, whenever we add, uh, sidewalks, our public works might have to adjust some of their operations, because we now have a piece of infrastructure there. So we would review with them, and they may have to push snow on the other side or push it to a different spot, and figure out a different way to operate on that corner that she, she, uh, mentioned. They would be responsible for removing snow from the sidewalk itself.
All right, and then, um, there was, uh, a couple of folks that were commenting, I think Mr. Soper primarily, that, uh, there was no ness, no necessity for a sidewalk on Beard Court, and it just added to the hardscape issues. Any thoughts on whether the sidewalk ought to extend into, uh, uh, Beard Court on the public right-of-way there, or we ought to have, uh, some other sort of solution there?
Uh, if I can jump in and maybe, maybe address an, another thing in that cul-de-sac, um, we, we have talked about the, the stormwater issues and the lack of storm sewer, and there was quite a number of comments on, on green space and, and not reducing that. Um, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but i- installing storm sewer in that area is going to impact some of that, kind of regardless of, of what we do with that cul-de-sac and sidewalk there. Um, of course, we will be, um, we have a policy to do a, a one-to-one, uh, replacement of trees that, that are removed, uh, and there, there certainly would be some, um, tree removals in that vicinity if the, uh, circular cul-de-sac design, uh, is implemented. Um, and as far as the, the not needing the sidewalk, um, I guess from our point of view, there'd just be a really small gap in between the sidewalk, uh, on Beard, uh, Avenue and the, uh, and the pedestrian bridge, so, uh, you know, we, we still would, we would recommend that, that sidewalk segment to, to complete the network.
Okay. Did any other council members pick up any questions, or staff pick up any other questions other than the ones that I alluded to?
Uh, the only other one, Mayor, if I may, this is Director Milner. Uh, the first question was, when are they gonna do the sidewalk south of the creek, through that neighborhood?
Right, yeah, thank you for catching that. Ms. Shadler was wondering about the sidewalk 58th, uh, from 58th on Beard to the creek.
Yeah, so it's not in our five-year plan. You know, we, we prioritize neighborhoods based on what we discussed earlier with the pavement condition and other needs. It's not in the five-year plan, but when it does come up, we will propose that Beard Avenue sidewalk along that location for all the reasons we've talked about tonight.
And then, uh, Mr. Ditzler, in your presentation, you talked about, uh, sidewalk from Fuller to, um, I think it was 57th.
Correct.
And is that, is that something you're proposing to do in conjunction with this project, either as part of it, or at least, uh, next summer sometime, summer '21?
That is the, the proposed, it's just a matter of if, is it incorporated into this project, or is it a standalone project? But it is proposed to be constructed in 2021.
All right, good, thanks for that clarification. Uh, council members have anything else from a question standpoint before we move on to the next matter?
Yeah.
Yeah, Member Staunton, go ahead.
So one thing I would just ask, and I, I don't think I saw it in the packet, but maybe it's in there, is, because I assume that these would be, you wouldn't do the technical drawings until the time that we decided to go ahead with this, but I'd be interested in knowing more about the dimensions of Beard and the sidewalk, et cetera, in the event we would do it, because there was a lot of testimony tonight about how close that sidewalk would come to the houses on the west side of Beard. And I'd like to understand when it comes back to us and, and we have to make a decision about it, what exactly the dimensions are we're talking about there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ditzler?
Uh, if I could, uh, I do have some exhibits that I, I could share, they're, uh, preliminary, we haven't really done any design here. Uh, forgive me here, let me see if I can share this.
We can share these and then also present them on the next, on the 15th too, so everybody can see them again.
And so the folks who have testified can see them as well, and, you know, if they've got comments on them between now and the time that we close the public hearing.
This is a, a draft of what the, uh, street and, uh, five-foot boulevard and five-foot sidewalk might look like. Uh, this is an example where we're, uh, if you, if you recall from previous, north of Fuller Street, the, the street was roughly 33 foot feet wide with curb and gutter today. So we'd probably be, uh, widening by about a foot or so, foot, foot and a half on either side. So th- this is roughly what it might look like, uh, north of Fuller Street. Um, south of Fuller Street, uh, again, it's, the pavement's roughly 28 feet wide or so today, so a little bit, uh, wider, uh, extension of the street and sidewalk combination, uh, south of Fuller Street.
All right, you're reminding me, your drawing is reminding me of a question I forgot to ask, uh, and that was, uh, Molly Wertz's concern at 3501 Fuller Street that, uh, uh, and, and Member Brindle and I have seen the topography there, there's a fairly steep slope on an existing yard, uh, and I think she, she said her front door was 10 feet above the street, and they're worried about the fact that there'd be a retaining wall there, uh, that, uh, would be necessitated, uh, cutting into their hillside, and that she worried about their, uh, their 18-year-old son who had Down Syndrome, doesn't understand risks, and, uh, worries about him taking, uh, a fall, uh, you know, down off of that, uh, that new wall we got created onto a sidewalk. And, um, first of all, uh, could you speak to that a little bit, that concern?
Yep, a- as you mentioned, it, it's quite a steep, uh, boulevard today, there's, there's quite a drop-off after the, the property line comes, comes down to the street pretty good. Um, unknown exactly where the sidewalk would need to go, there's currently a, a block wall here today, so certainly at the, uh, south end of the property, there would be a retaining wall. Would it need to go all the way up to Fuller Street? I would say doubtful, so it would transition somewhere in here, and, uh, um, certainly we could look for opportunities for, uh, safety, um, to, to prevent any falls from a, a retaining wall.
Maybe I'll jump in on this one, Aaron.
Sure.
So when we support a sidewalk the other direction, right, if the wall is supporting a sidewalk and it's a traveled way, if we're over a certain 30 inches, we're required to put a railing or a fence to protect the public. This is a very unique situation, I can say, in all the projects we've done, we've never had this request. So I think we would consider this one as a special request that wouldn't kind of set precedent citywide, and I would consider a fence along this retaining wall to protect, protect that, that individual, uh, if we go forward with a sidewalk or a wall. I think it's the least we can do for some of the vulnerable people of our community, and provide a safe facility here if we decide to go that route.
All right, and I think, uh, to some degree from being over there, I think Mr. Xander and his wife may have that same issue around the corner at 3500. Uh, it seems to me like, uh, he's got, um, a fairly steep and narrow side yard there on Beard, so that's something to keep in mind for them as well. All right. Other questions? That topped of the questions from council members or comments? Or, or from staff? Mr. Ditzler, did you, did you pick up on anything else that I might have missed?
Uh, yes, thanks for asking, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one of the comments was about the, uh, addition of a concrete sidewalk would, uh, wouldn't benefit the reduction of impervious, but, uh, we do have the, um, five-foot, uh, grass boulevard between the, uh, proposed sidewalk and the curb and gutter, so it does allow for some infiltration, uh, in between the sidewalk and the curb. Uh, for reference, the, uh, watershed district, uh, doesn't consider sidewalk as impervious as long as there is that, uh, a grass boulevard between the sidewalk and the, uh, concrete curb and gutter.
All right, thank you for that.
I have one final thing.
Member Brindle?
Thank you. Um, the concern about, um, the snowplow and where the snow is being dropped currently at the corner of 54th and Beard, and how that's impacting the Ford residents on that corner, I would want to know, what is the plan for dropping that snow, um, if there's a sidewalk there? Um, there isn't a lot of space here to put that snow, and I would not, if the sidewalk were to go in, and we expect, uh, the residents at that location to clear that sidewalk, I would not want the snowplow to drop snow on the sidewalk, making it more difficult. Uh, so I guess I'd like to see what, what would be a plan for, if snow is being dropped there today, what is the plan to not have snow drop there in the future?
All right, thank you. With the public, with the Public Works Department and bring something back on December 15th for you, Councilmember Brindle.
Okay.
Anything else from council members? Or from staff? All right, let's, uh, let's then move on to the next public hearing matter, which is the Melody Lake, uh, A and B that I mentioned earlier. And Director Milner, did you have any opening comments, or do you want to go right to Mr. Gurk?
Uh, just, just thank you first, giving us the time to clarify those questions on the last one, and I'll hand it, I think, right over to Charlie and let him get started.
Yeah, no, I think that was a good idea, Director Milner, I was sitting here wrestling with that, as I mentioned, and I think for the neighbors too, who may want to still write in and offer, uh, counter-comment to some of those, uh, comments that staff made, it, it's beneficial for them as well. So, okay, go ahead, Mr. Gurk.
There we go. Can everyone see my screen?
We can, Mr. Gurk.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor, council members, thank you for your time again tonight. Uh, I'll try and shorten some of the duplicated areas that Aaron already covered, but we'll still go through some of them. I'm here to present tonight the Melody Lake A and B, Grandview A, Birchcrest C neighborhood roadway reconstruction project. The project, as Chad mentioned earlier in the night, is just slightly southwest of City Hall. Its, uh, northern border is Vernon Avenue, its western bor- border is Hanson Road and the Canadian Pacific Railroad. To the south, it's, it's trapped by West 60th Street, and to the east, it's kind of a accumulation of a couple of adjoining neighborhoods, Highway 100 and Melody Lake. I will make sure to point out, though, that Benton Avenue, which is a state aid route, is not considered part of this project and will not be reconstructed. There is approximately 299 homes in the pro, or 299 properties within the project limits. We're going to be reconstructing 3.8 miles of road, roughly 53,000 square yards of street pavement will occur. There are currently 33 existing fire hydrants and 82 existing sanitary sewer manholes. As council may remember, we did present, or we're going to present, uh, Melody Lake A and Grandview A as part of the 2020 reconstruction season, due to a petition from residents, the projects were adjoin, or were joined to try and minimize impacts to, uh, the area around Benton, so those residents are around Grove, so they won't see a double impact. And that's why we're here today. Getting straight into the utilities, looking at the existing water main condition, uh, the vast majority of the project area is cast iron pipe, it's six or 12 inches, there are some larger mains running through this area. There is a 12-inch HDPE raw water main that runs on Hanson, that was installed in 2014. The water main is nearing the end of its useful life, according to the Ecologics data, which is a non-invasive testing company that we use to determine pipe wall loss thickness. Uh, the vast majority of the hydrants are original and do not meet current city standards, as well as the gate valves on all the water main are nearing the end of their useful The proposed water main improvements will be replacing the vast majority of the pipe and the adjoining surfaces. There is a 1,300-foot-long stretch of 12-inch main south of Grove Street on Hanson that we will keep in place, it is in excellent condition and does not need to be replaced. With that, we're going to replace all gate valves and upgrade all the hydrants to the city standard with the Stars connection. We're also going to verify appropriate hydrant spacing and add hydrants if needed to meet public safety standards. Uh, the Melody Lake area, Melody Lake A area in particular has, uh, inadequate hydrants to say the least, so that'll be a welcome relief to the fire department for that neighborhood. All these improvements are paid for under the Waterman Utility Fund. Moving on to the sanitary sewer, the area is mainly clay pipe, it's in fair conditions for age. It, with the preliminary... It, with the preliminary survey of doing videos of the lines, we did see some I and I or influence infiltration occurring in the system. We did identify some localized defects in the pipes, mainly root intrusion and crustaceans. The photo on your screen is off of Bernard Place. You'll notice the two little drips coming down from the top. Those two little drips might not look like a lot, but that's what we consider infiltration, and when you get a thousand of those or a couple thousands of those. Starts adding up into our sanitary sewer system, and as you may recall, our sanitary sewer system then is routed through the Metropolitan Council Sanitary Sewer System. And we pay for that, so we're paying for these drips. So to fix those drips, we're gonna do some spot trunk repair and we're gonna do some cured-in-place pipelining. Uh, the spot trunk pipe repairs are very minimal. There was very few areas of severely damaged pipes found during the preliminary survey. However, the pipelining is very non-invasive for those areas that don't have to be open-cut and is, uh, very traditional construction technique we use. We're also gonna replace manhole castings and rings. That's gonna secure those manholes and it's also gonna reduce infiltration into the sanitary sewer system. This is all paid for under the Sanitary Sewer Utility Fund and not by residents. Not by assessment, I should say. Uh, existing storm sewer condition. So a little under half the streets through the project area have curb and gutter. Uh, where we do have storm sewer, it's either corrugated metal pipe, PVC or reinforced concrete pipe. The vast majority of the storm sewer is in Melody Lake A. Uh, there's very few inlets in Melody Lake B in Birchcrest C. There are. Various amounts of localized surface drainage issues on the roadways, and they've been verified by resident comments. The picture on the slide here is on Windsor Avenue, and that may look like a small little defect. There's no curb and gutter, a small little defect in the road. That puddle was three days old, so. I wish I had had the original picture, but that was three days after it had rained, and those types of puddles that sit on the roadway eventually end up destroying our roadways because they get into the pavement, they get into the subgrade. And stuff falls apart. Proposed storm sewer improvements are gonna include modifications to the roadway into the storm sewer to improve existing drainage issues. We're going to install or replace curb and gutter project-wide. We're also gonna install some drain pipe where feasible. As the council may recall, some drain is, uh, uh. Asset that we add for the use of residents to connect their some drain line to and sometimes some surface drainage lines to. To help minimize impacts to neighboring private properties and to minimize impacts to the street for drainage. We did identify one significant area of risk based on the two thousand eighteen Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan, as you can see in the image on the right. There are about five structures at risk. This is on Dale Avenue. It's mid-block between Fifty-Sixth Street and Grove Street. Uh, the root cause of this problem. If I turn my pointer here, is this pipe right here that runs east-west. Which is running through, uh, an abandoned roadway. This was pl- platted as a roadway but then was given back to the residents. Uh, this pipe is undersized, and as part of this project, we are planning to increase that pipe size. Uh, we're not a hundred percent sure on the technique so far, but it's looking like we will probably do a pipe burst, which is pretty non-invasive to the adjoining properties. And will allow us to reduce this risk significantly. Looking at the existing conditions of the roadways. Like most roadways in Edina, these roads were built between nineteen forty and nineteen sixty. Hanson Road was reconstructed in nineteen eighty. Average width between twenty and thirty-nine, or typical width between twenty and thirty-nine feet, but the average is a thirty-foot road. Uh, primarily clay soils with some silty sands below it. We'll di- we'll get into that a little bit later here. Again, circling back to Chad's previous comments about the PCI and the pavement condition index, overall citywide right now, we're looking at a pavement index of seventy-two. The Melody Lake A, B. Grandview A and Birchcrest C project area has an overall rating of ten. Uh, this photo in front of you is from Melody Lake Drive. This is years and years of patching a problem that needed to be a full reconstruction. You'll notice the pavement has severely failed. There's, there's no amount of overlay or anything that will solve this problem. It needs to be from the base up to replace it. Or we'll be out there patching every year. So with the roadway improvements, what we're gonna do is we're gonna come in and we're gonna recycle the existing asphalt pavement material. We're gonna grind up the roadway and some of that subgrade or subbase. And we're gonna turn it into either new base material or a temporary road. We're gonna construct a new roadway section. It's gonna be a bi-tuminous or asphalt road per city standard. This neighborhood does have a significant amount of concrete roads. Those will not be replaced with concrete. They will be replaced with bi-tuminous or asphalt. The roadways are gonna be, for the most part, twenty-seven feet wide, with some exceptions that we'll talk about shortly. There are going to be significant subgrade corrections. Uh, additional soils investigations between last year and this year. Have found that the projects, project-wide, we have very poor soils. Many areas have clay-based soils with some organic-based soils too. These soil types provide very little to no support for the proposed new roadway, especially if we have a wet summer. So to correct that, we have to remove those poor soils, and then we have to replace it with a more stable soil for, uh, a subgrade to support the road, uh, cross-section. We're also gonna do a few other improvements that we traditionally won't see on a project like this. Uh, we're going to provide a left and right turn lane as you head north on Hanson onto Vernon Avenue. We're going to reconstruct the at-grade crossing, uh, at the Canadian Pacific Railroad to the south on Hanson. That crossing will not have any modifications to the early alert system or to the, the actual. Arms that come down, but to the crossing itself. We're not changing the height, we're not changing the location. We're just changing the plastic pads and the rubber membranes around it that, uh, helps smooth vehicles over and helps smooth walkers over it. We're also going to, wherever we can, improve site distance at the Benton Avenue intersections. And the surveys that went out to residents, a very common response was people did not like intersections at Benton Avenue. And some of that was because of site distance, so where we have the ability to improve that, we're going to. Talking about the Living Streets Plan again, long-term plan that the city's implemented, twenty-seven, twenty-four-foot-wide streets. Uh, traditionally will end up with less impervious surface. Through twen- two thousand eight, we've reduced the amount of impervious surface by these construction projects by five-point-six acres. This project's probably going to have a significant impact. We're looking at approximately one acre of reduction in impervious space. Uh, we're also gonna be able to better manage our stormwater. We're gonna help improve traffic calming by narrowing the streets. And we're gonna help improve the lifecycle cost of the, of the roadways. Uh, we're not gonna throw money at roads that really can't be repaired, and we're gonna put these new roads into a very well-oiled and regulated, uh, maintenance program. As Aaron had mentioned earlier, parking along the sidewalk side is traditionally what we do when we put in a sidewalk. And that is for pedestrian safety and comfort. As a reminder again, the Pedestrian Bicycle Master Plan was updated in two thousand eighteen. With that update, West Fifty-Sixth Street from Hanson to Normandale Road was added to the plan. If you want to take a moment to point out the project area, which is around in here. And this little gray line you see is the Canadian Pacific Railroad. And you'll notice that this separates a couple neighborhoods. You'll also notice Highway one hundred also separates a couple neighborhoods. We do have some proposed sidewalks. Uh, there's two, but they're kind of broken up into various areas, so we'll go through this briefly. We are proposing a sidewalk on the west side of Hanson Road. And that will be a five-foot walk with a five-foot Boulevard. North of the tracks, we're proposing a twenty-seven-foot-wide road. That is to accommodate requests from the Parks Department at Yancy Park. That park does get rather busy, uh, and we're hoping to help alleviate their, their parking needs. South of the tracks, though, we will be reducing the road to twenty-four feet and installing that five-foot walk with the five-foot Boulevard. Parking will be on the west side. Then we are also proposing a sidewalk from Hanson Road to Normandale Road. That runs from Hanson Road to Dale is a very narrow right-of-way section. It's gonna be a twenty-foot-wide road with a six-foot back-of-road walk. That's because of the minimal right-of-way in that area. Once we get out of that minimal right-of-way, we'll build the typical twenty-four-foot-wide, five-foot boulevard, five-foot Boulevard, five-foot walk section. On the south side of West Fifty-Sixth Street, heading east. Once we get to Code Avenue and we're outside the current project area and we open up into the, I'll call it the sidewalk project area. We're proposing to keep the existing twenty-seven-foot-wide roads that were rebuilt about ten years ago. And installing a five-foot walk with a five-foot Boulevard. Parking will be available on both sides. All of the sidewalks mentioned will need to be maintained by the property owner, except for the sidewalk directly adjacent to the park, which will be maintained by the city, who is the property owner. We did also on this project receive a petition against the sidewalk on West Fifty-Sixth Street. You'll notice the petition signers on this map. There are two additional signers that were south of Grove Street, but for ease of being able to view this map. We cut them out, but there were two additional signers. So kind of tying back to Aaron and Chad's comments earlier about the pedestrian and bicycle master plan. Some of the guiding principles. Use an all-ages and abilities approach to provide safe routes for all. Uh, some of the language in that wording was comfortable use of the facility by the majority of Edina residents. Uh, accessibility, people that may not feel safe in a street because they have vision impairment issues and they need a trail to guide them, or people that are mobility. That have mobility issues that don't feel safe in the street that would like to be on a trail. Uh, the equity issue, allowing others to travel and commute around the community in a safe manner. Uh, develop facilities and address gaps, you know, we look at the, we look at this map. Of the pedestrian facilities proposed and current throughout the neighborhoods, and we'll see Highway one hundred right here. And these two circles indicate those spiral pedestrian bridges that exist that were installed to connect the east and west communities. Those exist and they're very close to West Fifty-Sixth Street. Additionally, we're trying to connect these sidewalks to everyday uses and needs. We have Yancy Park to the west, we have Melody Park to the east. Melody Park will be slightly revised this summer. I'm not sure where that proposal is, but it will be proposed to be revised this summer for some improvements. And Highland Park up to the northwest. You also connect Southview Middle School to the southeast here. And while these residents that are south of Vernon and west of one hundred don't attend Valley Middle School. The residents that are north of Vernon and west of one hundred or even east of one hundred do attend, uh, Valley Middle School for the most part. We're also trying to connect these neighborhoods and these other bike and pedestrian path networks. Chad did show this slide, so I won't read the quote again, but just again. Uh, there are no trails or sidewalks where I want to go. What keeps people from walking in Edina? I feel unsafe around motorized vehicles and traffic. These are kind of the two core principles for some of the sidewalks where. Where you're walking outside your neighborhood and you're trying to take a trail or network somewhere. You don't follow roads when you wander on trails. You, you wander on the trails, not the roads, so. That's why these sidewalks that are missing in the system are important. With that all said, we did take, uh, a look at three different options at the request of the residents, uh, in the engineering department. At what, what else could we do to make this a, a nice trail system or a path? Option one is the, is the original option of building the five-foot Boulevard with the five-foot walk. No modifications to the existing twenty-seven-foot-wide road and parking remains on both sides. Option two is a five-foot Boulevard with a five-foot walk, so not much change in there. But instead of keeping the road to twenty-seven feet, we'll reduce it down to twenty-four feet wide and match the current Living Streets policy. And we'll also remove parking from one side. This is an option. It does have an additional price tag of a hundred thousand dollars, but it is an option we considered. Another option we investigated and considered was the use of pavement markings to designate an on-street walkway. One-sided parking on the non-walkway side. Staff recommends option one. Uh, the reasons for it are very simple. Uh, there's far less impacts to option than option two. We don't need to cut up a new street to move in the road. We don't have to replace all the curb and gutter. We're not having to replace everyone's aprons. Uh, it's just far less impactful. Uh, there is a cost savings with it, but. As we all know, cost sometimes isn't the most important factor, but it is a factor here, and we don't eliminate any parking. Uh, option three, for the purpose of conversation, was considered, but it truly doesn't support the objectives of the Pedestrian Bicycle Master Plan and would be, uh. A non-referred option of any sort by staff. Existing conditions, so moving all the sidewalks and into the right-of-way, both Chad and Aaron kind of hit on these comments. The landscaping mailbox is outwalks, irrigation systems, pet fences, uh. That special little concrete pad you have, all these, all the things that are in the right-of-way. As part of the reconstruction project, preliminarily, we go and inventory all those items and features. We photograph and survey them. And then as, uh, the construction project wraps up, we restore all those things. We work, we work with the adjoining property owner to get it as close or as best as we can, or get it back to what it was, and that's year after year. So this will be my last slide and Chad will take, uh, over after this. Uh, estimated project cost for the job. Is roughly seven-point-two million dollars for the, the special assessment, the roadway costs. We have roughly a million dollars in sanitary sewer costs primarily through the CIP lining. We have three-point-six million dollars in water main, and as a reminder, we're replacing. The vast majority of water main within this project limit. We have three-point-seven million dollars in anticipated storm sewer costs. Uh, something that I did forget to mention previously is. One of the, one of the downsides of building a project now. When we have Benton to be reconstructed in the next fifteen years is we need to make sure that whatever storm sewer we put in going down the hill to the south. Is adequate for the storm sewer that will be required in Benton by the state of Minnesota when we reconstruct that, so the storm sewer cost is a little higher on this project. Because of that. Uh, so the overall utility cost is eight-point-four-two million dollars, paid for out of city utility funds. And then the sidewalk cost is seven-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. There is a very large chunk of that, roughly two-hundred-some-thousand dollars, that is, uh. The Hanson retaining wall, which wasn't brought up in this presentation for time-saving measures, but. There is a large retaining wall required on Hanson Road, uh, to support that sidewalk. Overall, the entire project is roughly sixteen-point-three million dollars. It does include engineering, clerical, finance costs, and contingency are all in those totals.
Thanks, Charlie, and I'll go through the remainder of the slides and have Charlie just click through. Uh, special assessments, uh, the, the special assessments are assigned to benefiting properties for these improvements. And again, our policy is a hundred percent roadway costs, which is pavement removals, excavation, the subbase. The bath and the pavement, hundred percent of the restoration costs. Driver repairs, landscaping, topsoil, seed, fence and irrigation systems. And then those indirect costs of finance, engineering, the soil investigations and mailings. And then just a reminder that the curb and gutter is paid from the storm sewer fund, so they are not assessed for the curb and gutter cost. Again, we base our assessments on a term called residential equivalent units, or REUs. The factors used to compare properties to a single-family residence, so a single-family home is a one-point-zero RU. We also have multifamily and multifamily residential duplex and apartment condos in this project area. So we have different factors for scenario B and C of zero-point-eight and zero-point-five for an RU factor. Go ahead, Charlie. So you've gotten a lot of emails on the project costs and some information that were presented, so just a reminder that this project was due to happen in two years, twenty-twenty and also twenty-twenty-one. So as part of our process, in the summer of twenty-nineteen. In the summer of twenty-nineteen, we had just the north half of this project, so Melody Lake A and Grandview A. And at the time of the meeting, we had estimated assessments with a range of up to nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars. There was a hundred and sixty-one RU's, uh, about twenty-five thousand square yards of paving, so to account for about a hundred and fifty-four square yards of paving per RU. Next slide, Charlie. We merged the two projects into one, continued to do soil investigations in the range. continued to do soil investigations, and the range that we presented this summer increased to $24,200 per REU. So our REUs went up 137 REUs, but we more than doubled the square yards of paving. So the paving square yards per REU went up. It went from 154 to 176, and you'll be able to see why on the assessment graphic slide. Go ahead, Charlie. So on the slide, you can see those Benton Avenue properties. Since they're along a street not included in the property, that's only a 0.5 REU. So we added almost double, more than double the area of streets, but didn't add the double of REUs. So that project cost, after we took the $7.2 million divided by 297.54 REUs, we get an estimated assessment tonight of $24,200 per REU. If you're north on the chart, there's some other properties. We're assessing ourselves for the city park properties. There's an apartment building on Hanson Road. Then there's a few of those corner lots along Benton and a few unique properties that were assessed with a previous project out on 60th Street. Next slide. The question is why? Why did it go from 1909 to 2402? Like I mentioned, we did more soils investigations between those two years. And when we compare the soils, like Charlie mentioned, lots of clays, organics, and we are concerned. We're concerned if we get a wet summer that it just won't support the streets. So we have assumed subcut through this entire project area. And we don't typically have to do that. This is a very unique neighborhood in that case. Maybe we're being too conservative. You know, if we get good bid prices and good weather conditions, we might not be at the number, but we just couldn't justify publicly. We weren't comfortable publishing $19,900 and then having to potentially come back to the council and say, oops, we were $5,000 short. But we're being conservative with this number tonight. And then we have an avenue that council consider to get some better data here, once we get to further slide. So next slide. Again, we did the market benefit estimate. We had nickel appraising do the benefit letters. Benefit range that was in that benefit letter report and the single-family homes benefiting between $15,000 and $25,000 per buildable lot. But we know that's based on the characteristics of individual properties. We know not all properties meet the benefit test, but we don't know how many don't meet it. We also gave a range of benefits for the apartment building at $2,500 to $4,500 per unit. And our assessment amount definitely does not meet that benefit test for the apartment building. So that's a unique situation that we may have to address. Next slide. So the project schedule is similar. This one had an extra open house because we delayed that northern part of the project. We again did informational video presentation because of COVID. We did a video presentation this August. ETC reviewed the study. We asked you to close the public hearing on December 9th and have a discussion about the project on the 15th. We would anticipate a bid opening and contract award this spring, construction in 2021, with our final assessment hearing in the fall of 2022. So we believe this project is necessary to improve the infrastructure. We would ask you to make a motion to close the public hearing at noon on the 9th and then take action on the item on December 15th. Next slide, Charlie. As an alternate recommendation, I know the council's struggling with the project cost concerns and still has staff. When we compare the costs and those benefits, we're concerned. We know there's some work happening by the task force, the street funding task force that's scheduled to be completed in early 2021. So as an alternate recommendation, and maybe our city attorney, Mr. Kendall, could speak to this too on the laws that allow us to do this. One of the recommendations that you could consider on the 15th is order staff to do the bid documents and receive the bids. Do not approve the preliminary special assessment amounts on the 15th. Let us bring back better costs based on those bids and assessments and see where we're at after bidding. That also aligns with the rough schedule that the street funding task force work is trying to get done in the first quarter. We would be back roughly about the same time. So per that Minnesota State statute, Chapter 429, that we keep referencing, there's a term in there, a caveat, that allows the council to continue the public hearing for up to six months after the date of the initial hearing. And I guess I'll let Attorney Kendall chime in on that action, if that's the appropriate way to word that potential avenue for the council.
Thank you, Director Milner. Mr. Kendall?
Thank you, Mayor Hovland. Director Milner correctly summarized the option the council has. The statute does allow you to, after this hearing tonight, to continue the matter for up to six months prior to passing a resolution ordering the project. If you wish to receive additional information, if it comes back higher, you have to hold a new improvement hearing to address that higher cost. If it comes back lower, you can simply order the project as specified at this hearing with a lower cost. So those are your options. You know, even if you order the project on the 15th, I shouldn't say tonight, on the 15th, that doesn't mean you necessarily have to assess that project in conformity with the proposed assessments. You can still address changes at the assessment hearing. But I think you should also bear in mind that these general benefit letters from the appraisal firm are certainly a useful guide, but they are not necessarily, you know, they're not designed to be 100% accurate, 100% binding. They are just that, a general assessment of the benefit, not a special assessment. They're a general quantification of the expected benefit. So we do have situations where, number one, the project costs come in lower, as Director Milner already alluded to, or number two, the benefit could potentially be higher if you have individual appraisals of these properties. So the council has a couple of options here tonight, and one of those is just to wait to take action on this until you have maybe a more firm handle on the potential costs.
So we could, if I understand you correctly, we could, on the 15th, if this matter were continued for public input until noon on the 9th of December, and then we took it up on the 15th of December. On the 15th of December, we could order the project but not have the assessment hearing on the project for up to six months?
Correct. You can wait for up to six months to pass the resolution ordering the project. Correct.
Or setting those preliminary assessments, right?
Yes, yes.
Setting those preliminary.
We could order the project be done on the 15th theoretically, but we could hold off making any preliminary assessment on it for up to six months?
Correct.
Okay. And that's something I think everybody in this council's thinking about is, wait a minute, we got a task force at work. And one of the big issues they were addressing was subsoils, you know, because we got those variable subsoil conditions all over town. Should that be something that we try to equalize from a cost standpoint and deal with subsoils in the same manner that we deal with curb and gutter and have that be an expense that's borne by the entire community? Well, that's something we haven't decided yet. But it sounds like it's something that could be a substantial cost factor in this project. We have any sense of that, Mr. Gurk or Director Milner? What the soil costs have added to this project cost?
Yeah, it's about $7,000 per REU. So, you know, I know the street funding task force was at the work session in November, and they had some ideas. We think the timing might be right where these projects could be considered with a new policy if the council decides to adopt that early in '21. But if we did pull subcut out of this project, it would be in that $17,000 range and in more of an appropriate standpoint for the benefit test.
Thoughts of council members about that type of a strategy?
That really is the stopping point for me is the is the assessment per household in a project like this. So if we can, if the two timelines for needing to make a decision on this and being able to finalize the work of the street funding task force so that we can reformat how we structure a project to get this assessment down to something that's more usual, I'll put it. Because as I drive that area, the properties aren't, it's not like an area that has so few properties to divide the cost between. So it's really hard to get your head around why and how you could come up with a $24,000 assessment when you've got 300 properties, 290, yeah, 300 properties in the area to divide the cost between. So if the amount of subcut work that's needed is to that degree in this location, then it really, I think we have to wait and see if we can't get the street funding task force work done and hopefully that means that the subcut work can be part of what is paid for outside of the assessment.
All right. Well, this is all, of course, a theoretical discussion because we haven't made any kind of a decision yet, and we haven't heard the public input on it. But nonetheless, I appreciate that line of thought. Anyone else preliminarily, do you want to? Comment?
Well, Mayor, I'd open it up to any questions. Charlie and I would take any questions at this time. Our presentation is complete. We take any questions.
Okay, so I'll give you one. So in the page 19 of the engineering study, there's the current street width and the proposed roadway width. In looking at the streets that are going to have a sidewalk are 24 feet wide, parking on one side, and then there's a portion of Dale, and I think I know, a portion of West 56th, and I think I know what portion this is. It is, that's 20 feet wide. Would you identify, because there's a sidewalk marked at that part of 56th as well, would you identify where that very narrow piece of roadway would be?
Yep. Well, Charlie cheers.
Absolutely. Councilmember Brindle.
Yeah. He said, comes down the hill and turns and hits Hanson.
Yeah, it's that, it's kind of a connector, if you would, between Hanson and 56th as it goes east-west, right? It's that little piece that.
My screen should be back up.
Yeah, either, I mean, depending on the direction you're traveling, if you're coming on 56th, you get past Dale and then you go steeply down the hill and curve, and then it hits Hanson. And it's that little stretch in there where it's almost like a little pathway that's about 20 feet wide.
Correct. It's between Hanson and Dale, just south of the railroad tracks in the area. Your terminology of a connector is very accurate. It weeds and brush and the tracks on one side and mainly backyards, and I think one front yard on the other side.
Okay, so how many driveway accesses do we have on that section if it's 20 feet wide? And so which, so two questions. Which side is the sidewalk going to go on? And then how many curb cuts do we have in there for driveways?
So there's one cut on 5600 right here. And there is a curb cut at 5617 or 5621, but the intersection starts to open up there, so that's not as concerning. The walk is proposed on the south side, so in front of those immediate properties there.
Okay, so it hugs the properties? Okay?
Yeah. And if you look at the aerial for 5600, it looks like we have a lot of roadway there, but there's a huge amount of right of way. And that, right as this circular top comes in, that's where the driveway is. And in our final design, if it makes sense, we can widen that up a little bit, just to provide better access to that home's driveway.
Okay, okay. That helps. I was over there today and forgot to look at the number of driveways that were in that section. Thank you.
Member Anderson?
Yes, thank you. I was thinking along the lines of the work of the special assessment task force and the timing of it. Just for clarity, if on the 15th we decide to recommend the improvements, then from that point, there would be six months, accurate, to, for the assessment hearing or to assess the total amount?
Yes, Member Anderson, that's correct. You would have six months to pass that resolution to set those preliminary assessments.
Okay, so.
Let me jump in there just briefly, Member Anderson. It would actually be to, it's six months to actually order the project after the improvement hearing. So you would not order the project on the 15th. You would continue that matter out a maximum of six months. And then if the numbers from the engineering department changed, then you could change the preliminary assessments prior to ordering the project.
Okay, so then just a question in general about process as it relates to the task force. The mayor's very accurate in his comments relative to the subcut and the conversation that we had recently with them. We don't know what their final recommendation would be. We don't know whether we will actually approve any recommendation they make. There may also, though, be further recommendations to come out of that work. So in terms of process on those recommendations, when those could be heard and then granting approval to those recommendations, then that would have to follow then into the final ordering of this project. And then what the financing piece of that is. There's a lot of moving parts in there. I just want to have clarity on.
Yeah, Councilmember Anderson, when, after the work session in November, we got together with the task force and the chair again, and we kind of laid out a project schedule. So our goal is to start public engagement next week and run that engagement to the first or second week of January, collect all those comments the third week of January, and then use those comments for the task force to come up with some final recommendations and potentially bring those back to the council. We're shooting to have those back either February or March and have a final and a presentation at a formal council meeting to potentially adopt a new policy or adopt those recommendations from the task force. Our goal is to have that work completed of the task force the first quarter of 2021.
First quarter.
The council may not, right, the council may not approve those recommendations. You still need to consider them. We want the task force work to wrap up. They've been at it since June. That would be nine months, 10 months of work already, and I think they've done their their service to the community and developed some recommendations that the council would now need to make a decision on.
I agree with you. And I further, just on that, the timeliness of that and the creation of the task force really ties into this project in particular, or maybe to others in the future. This is a big number, and the special benefit test is a concern in this project. So the timing on this may just work out perfectly. So thank you for all your answers, and I understand. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Member Fisher?
Yeah, it's not so much a question as just, I'm really thankful for staff's alternate suggestion here. And, you know, obviously, we want to listen to people talk about the dynamics of the project and concerns. But I can tell from my email what a lot of them will be about, right? It's the sheer cost of this thing, and frankly, what has made me so uncomfortable is just this idea of approving an assessment that would be amongst the highest ever, right on the precipice of some potential change. So I don't, you know, in theory, that's not where you'd want to end here before you make some future change, whatever that is that comes from the task force. So this notion about trying to thread that needle and find a way to, what I heard you say is get more certainty with biddable documents, so we could actually know what these unknowns might end up costing. biddable documents, so we could actually know what these unknowns might end up costing, uh, as well as having that task force work coming to that point. I think if we can figure out a way to get there, we should try to get there. And hopefully, you know, we can, um, you know, I'm guessing people are still going to comment on the cost, and I guess, I'm guessing we all agree with the cost issue. So, uh, hopefully, we can get a lot of other, um, project-related comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Fisher. It was a nice summation, I think, of everybody's thinking on this matter. I'm still a little bit perplexed by the, um, notion that, um, we can delay ordering the project. Uh, but if we wait up to six months to order the project, how does it possibly get done in this particular calendar year that's ahead of us here in 2021? Because usually, we try to complete a project within, uh, within a summer season or a summer and a fall season. How, how does that work? If you can't, if we, if we determine we're waiting for uh, the task force to finish their work, then we have our deliberations on what, if any of their recommendations, we're going to adopt. Then we decide we're going to order the project because we're theoretically more comfortable with how we're going to lower costs. Uh, and we don't order the project for four, five, six months. How do we get it done? Why, why, why would we even go in 2021 on it if we waited that long? Maybe I'm missing something here.
Yeah, members of council, good question. So I think it's the use of our terms. You know, I would say on the 15th, you tell staff to get more information. And we would create bidding documents and go for bids. We'd come back, um, in April with a potential award and have better numbers based on those bids. And March, I'm hoping that the task force will have recommendations in front of you that we could maybe address that policy change in March. Be in front of you in April with this potential new information from bidding. And then you would consider ordering the project to move forward for construction in April is the rough timeline, just like Councilmember Fisher mentioned. There's a few things that everything has to align, uh, pretty well, but we feel like the task force is on that trajectory. If the 15th, you tell us to come back with more info, we're going to start design, you know, final design and go for bids and bring that bid, bid amounts back in April. Now, with the size of the project, we still have some concerns with private utilities and getting it done in one year, but maybe we can get a majority of it done in 21 and may have to come back to finish this portion in 22. Those would be discussions we'd have with you when we came back in April. So we wouldn't use the entire six months, is my opinion, that we could use by tabling this matter.
Well, it certainly does squarely put that cost issue in front of us here when we faced it uh, in the neighborhood up off Antrim. Uh, we were looking at large house, large lots with high-valued houses, and here we're we're looking at a, a more conventional-style neighborhood that has a significant, uh, potential assessment. It's really, it's really quite staggering for all of us, I think. Um, okay, well, let's, uh, let's turn to, are we comfortable, council members, turning to public testimony now to hear what folks have to say that are uh, interested in this project? All right, so let's, uh, let's remind folks that, uh, we're going to now take testimony from residents who would like to provide uh, comments to the council in this matter. The call-in number was 800-374-0221, conference ID 8034569, 8034569. An operator is going to ask your name and street address, put you in the queue. You got to press star one to get in the queue. Director Bennerott is going to remind you of that in a moment. Manager, Manager Neil is our timekeeper. He's going to tell you when you've got 30 seconds left. And then at the three-minute mark, he'll tell you when your time is up and, and, um, we'll try to have you wrap up your comments in as quickly as possible because we want to keep everybody on the three-minute mark for, uh, uh, equality of treatment on this issue. So, uh, Director Bennerott, what do we have in the queue for folks that want to visit with the council?
Our first caller tonight is Mr. Tom LaForce. Operator, will you please unmute Tom's line? And then, Tom, please begin by clearly stating your full name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
We can. Mr. LaForce, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Tom LaForce. I live at 5901 Kingdale Avenue. And as Member Fisher predicted, my comments this evening will address the cost of the project and the method for paying for it. With an estimate of, of almost over $24,000, I've got three concerns and a question, and some of these you've already highlighted. Um, the first is that with 30% of the estimated assessment being related to poor soil conditions, I'm struck that, um, I don't think I should be on the hook for that. It seems to me when the city built the roads, they should have had the proper roadbed put in the first place. Uh, an informed buyer looking at purchasing in a neighborhood would have no way of, you know, having some sort of assessment or knowing what the road condition or what the soil conditions are underneath the road. Second, I, I, I read the appraisal report for this project, and it makes what I consider a really weak argument um, for the, for the benefits test. And it, and it, it seems suspect when the estimated range of benefits just happens to exceed the maximum estimated uh, assessment by about $800. Now, I can see on expensive homes, it's easier to justify the benefit. I mean, a million-dollar property would only need to increase its value by two, about two and a half percent to get to 24,000. And that could happen just through normal market swings. For a $400,000 property like my own, the market value would need to increase by 6%. I suggest the city prove this benefit for homes in four or five price ranges rather than using an average property market value for the whole project area. Uh, the third thing is that, uh, the, in, in many of you know this, I, I don't agree with the 100% assessment policy. I think it's unfair. Um, I've lived in this neighborhood for 31 years, and many neighbors, many, many neighbors have come and gone, living here sometimes for 10 or 15 years and never paid anything for the street. Uh, it creates a situation which some people, you know, might also move within Edina, and then they have to pay this large sum twice. I, I believe that the roads are owned by all of us, and, and, and I don't have any more, I have as much right to a road on the other part of town as someone in that part of town has on mine, and that we should all be paying for them together. I, I know you're considering these alternate methods of paying for the streets, and I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful uh, we won't be the last project to get this huge assessment and then have the whole system changed right after that. I'm, I'm particularly interested in the task force's recommendation to immediately eliminate the subcut costs from the assessment. I think, I think that in itself would be a huge help, and I'd really like to see that included, uh, when you make the final decision on the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaForce.
Mayor Hovland, members of the council, I do not have anyone else in the queue at this point. Though we do have a handful of other callers on the line. As a reminder to those on the line or those calling in, um, once you've connected to the conference call, to get into the queue to speak, you need to press star one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol followed by number one. Um, with that, I have a few people who have joined us. Um, our first speaker is Tom Forker. Um, operator, will you please unmute Tom's line? And Tom, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Uh, thank you, my name's Tom Forker, and I live at 5109 West 56th Street. Um, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight regarding our opposition to the proposed sidewalk West 56th. Uh, my wife Judy and I have lived on West 56th for over 22 years. Uh, we raised three boys on the street without sidewalks. Uh, as you may know, in 2012, a similar sidewalk, uh, proposal was included when our portion of the street was reconstructed, and that was rejected by this council. We believe that nothing has changed on this street necessitating the proposed sidewalk. West 56th and the city's living street full street. Uh, according to the plan, local streets do not require sidewalks. We believe that there are several reasons to reject the proposed sidewalk. First, there is no safety issue on this street. This is, there's only local traffic on West 56th. This is a walkable neighborhood without the proposed sidewalk. According to the city's plan, there have been no reported pedestrian or bike incidents from 2006 to 2015, and we're not aware of any from 2015 to now on West 56th Street. If safety is a concern, it can be addressed with additional traffic control signs and without a sidewalk. Secondly, and very importantly, the proposed sidewalk does not add to the city's goal of connectivity. West 56th is not an active walking school route. It is not identified on the safe routes to school recommendations. There are no metro transit bus routes or bus stops at or on West 56th Street. There's no community destinations on the block. There are no regional connections, such as the Non-Mile Creek Regional Trail or Mini-Haha Creek. West 56th is not identified in the city's redevelopment district plan. The proposed sidewalk does not provide access to any shopping or restaurants or improve mobility. Also, this sidewalk will not connect anyone to Highlands Park, which is across Vernon, as suggested by the proposal. Finally, the city's master pedestrian bike plan contains no specific community comments related to West 56th Street. West 56th Street was never identified on any map as a street walking or biking issues. It is not identified as a destination in Edina. It is not a location identified as difficult to walk or bike. There's no reference in the idea for improvement section of the city's master plan. This sidewalk is simply not needed, and removing it from the Connect Edina Plan does not impact in any way achieving the overall goal of connectivity. Judy and I strongly support the city's efforts for, for to improve connectivity. However, we think the voices in this neighborhood should be heard, not just the 252 people who responded to the sidewalk survey as referenced in the proposal. The resources the city would spend on the sidewalk
Mr. Forker, I need to have you wrap up. You're over the three-minute mark, can you wrap up real quick?
Yes, we request that the council reject the proposed sidewalk. I thank you for your time, and I also thank the city engineering department for the time they spent with us explaining and discussing the proposed project.
Thank you, Mr. Forker.
Next speaker tonight is Mr. Kevin Borer. Operator, will you please unmute Kevin's line? And Kevin, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kevin Borer, address is 5605 Dale Avenue. Um, thanks for, uh, taking the time. Um, and I just want to reiterate what a lot of the council members have said, that um, with the additional added cost, we're, you know, in a pretty modest neighborhood of Edina, and that, you know, additional approximate $7,000 cost is, you know, that, that's a pretty large burden for us to bear. Um, and I, I do work in construction, so I understand, you know, some of the things with the soils, and I get that that will have a significant cost. Uh, that's one of the problems we face in construction is with these unforeseen conditions. Um, and that, to me, is just a, a good case for that to be in more of a general fund and not be assessed to just us homeowners. So, um, I just wanted to state that, and again, I appreciate the, the council's caution with proceeding with such a record-breaking assessment, uh, I, um, just wanted to add my two cents, and, uh, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Borer.
Caller this evening is Ruth Ann Metzger. Operator, will you please unmute Ruth Ann's line? And Ruth, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Ruth Ann Metzger, 5600 Dale Avenue. And I, I appreciate the info presented tonight. Um, I attended the other meetings. And actually, in 2017, I drew up a petition against the sidewalk along 56th, um, which has additional names on it from what was presented tonight. So I could pull that info if that would be, um, useful. The two items I wanted to hit right now were, I appreciate, I'm the one with the driveway on the narrow portion of 56th Street, even though my address is Dale Avenue. So hearing that you could widen the street some so that I can make my driveway, because I have a greater than 90-degree angle turn to make my driveway. My other comment is, um, looking through the material for tonight's meeting, the road from Hanson to Dale will be 20 feet wide. The sidewalk will be six feet wide, there is no boulevard. I'm trying to understand how I'm going to be able to shovel all the snow that the plow puts on my property because the other side of the street is railroad tracks. So I would like to know what needs to be done to have the city clear the portion, that block, that's with the narrow street, sidewalk, no boulevard. The city is already going to clear the sidewalk along Garden or Yancey Park, easily make a turn and come up the one block on 56th. Thank you, that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Metzger.
Um, back on the line is Mr. David Price. Operator, will you please unmute David's line? And then, David, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record. Um, before David begins, I would just like to say we do have a number of other people on the call, but David is the only one in the queue right now. So as he's speaking, if others would like to queue up, I would appreciate it. To do that, please press star one on your telephone keypad. David, thank you, and please go ahead.
Hi, my name is David Price, I'm at 5816 Hanson Road, and I, uh, thank you for pardoning my earlier enthusiasm, but, uh, in light of the fact that we got a letter saying that we were getting a $24,000 assessment, I hope you can appreciate my enthusiasm for coming in. And I really am appreciative of the reaction that I've been hearing from the council today in terms of this just being, uh, uh, there, there needing to be other mechanisms, mechanisms to deal with this. I actually started dialogue with Mr. Milner earlier today, and so I could understand the work better, and I appreciate his diligence, and in general, I appreciate the public work for Edina. And in this current project, we, we will be getting a sidewalk going on our side of the street on Hanson, and I support that 100% because it is such a busy street, and I support the public good. But I'm just going to echo what I think a lot of you are thinking, is that the public good needs to be funded more by the general public. And so I'm encouraged by the talk about making variability such as soil quality paid for with a mechanism other than assessment. Um, I mean, work down the street on Hanson, like, I think last year was like half of this. And so, uh, and I understand these differences, uh, because our soil does have high clay composition, I know from my front yard. So I support the work going forward, but even with the improved bids, I'm still expecting the cost to be significantly higher than other neighborhoods. So there needs to be a mechanism in place like you've been talking about. Um, maybe there's even a cap in terms of nature, nature assessments. Going back to Mr. LaForce's comment about how just, uh, assessments can be inequitable, just in terms of a person's tenure while they're in their home. So I'm glad you're thinking creatively, I just want to applaud that line of thinking, and I hope that, uh, results in certain policies in terms of how these types of things are funded.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and for letting us have, letting us have voice, uh, in our city council meetings, I really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for calling back in.
Our next speaker tonight is Judith Hawley. Um, operator, please unmute Judith's line, and Judith, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Judith Hawley, and I live at 5013 West 56th Street. I've lived in Edina for 30 years. I've been, uh, living at this address for 22 years. Uh, worked for Hennepin County for 30 years, raised my family here, and now I'm retired. Um, the first thing I want to say is that we did not, I live in the part of, um, 56th Street that had the streets redone in 2012. So the impact on me would be the sidewalk impact, and I strongly support the petition. That's before the council, I was one of the people who helped circulate the petition. The first thing I want to say is that up until October, mid-October, uh, we had no notice, those of us who have no street work to be done, we had no notice that sidewalks were, uh, going to be suggested as part of this plan. We were not surveyed, we did not have any opportunity for feedback. We were not considered in the planning or the study with respect to the viability of sidewalks on 56th Street. I strongly support Mr. Forker's comments about the lack of need for sidewalks on 56th Street. We are in a neighborhood, um, and it may look like it connects on the map, but it does not connect in fact. The people walk freely in the streets, there have been no accidents, there have been no incidents. Groups walk together with their dogs. Groups walk together with their dogs. They walk together with their children. Kids throw balls across the street, throw footballs across the street. This is not Benton. It's not Hanson. It's not Vernon. It's not the frontage road. I'm a little surprised that Benton is not being considered for sidewalks. From what I understand from your general plan, it's proposed that it'll be a shared path for Benton when the work is done there. And I think some of the neighborhood here would agree to a shared path if that would be subject that would be considered by the council. On a personal note, I want to tell you, I'm seventy-one years old. I'm trying to stay in my home. I'm trying to maintain my home. In the middle of October, I learned that the city wants to take ten feet of my front yard, which is their right-of-way for a sidewalk. I see the loss of privacy. I see the loss of security. I see a possible reduction in property value. I see the loss of mature trees and plants and damage to the environment. I also think it's the wrong side of the street, because we are in the side of the street where the snow does not melt. Yet, we will be required to maintain and repair at extra cost to ourselves, the small number of residents whose street work is not being affected. I strongly support the shared path. I love my neighborhood. I'd like to stay in my home. I don't want to move up to one of the high-rises, but I also have to be realistic that it's an additional handicap is being presented to me as an older person who wants to live in this neighborhood. It's arbitrary. I don't think it's fair. But thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley.
Our next speaker tonight is Gregory Keane. Operator, will you please unmute Gregory's line? Gregory, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yeah, thanks. I'm Gregory Keane, fifty-one oh-five West Fifty-Sixth Street. So let me jump in, boy, I appreciate the financial challenge here. We're part of a petition for no sidewalk on West Fifty-Sixth. Petition includes about thirty households, young and old, with kids, without kids. You know, for council, I'd just say our headline is, similar to other notes, a lone sidewalk on West Fifty-Sixth does not contribute to the city's master plan, and it's definitely a loss for us as residents. We've reviewed the plans. We agree with the goals of connecting to city assets, along with walkability and safety. And congratulations, I would say, the city's already achieved these goals in our neighborhood without a sidewalk. As others have said in 2012, not nineteen forty, not nineteen eighty, just recently, the city built a wide street with curves on that east stretch of West Fifty-Sixth. This council agreed specifically then that a sidewalk was not needed. You already decided that. So we say, why revisit it? Why redo it now? We can save money. The wide streets already encourage walkers to stroll the neighborhood, use both sides of the street, no sidewalks. A sidewalk on one side of a street won't turn this into a connector street. It won't change already great walking patterns. And as Judith mentioned and others for longer trips, we're bordered by great connector options. We've got the Highway one-hundred frontage road to get to O.L.G. and Jerry's. We have Benton and the Highway one-hundred walk bridges to get to Countryside, or the Community Center, or to the East Edina destinations. And we've got Vernon and Fiftieth to get to downtown Edina. And also of note, take a good look at the walk and bike paths in the master plan. They're all much larger and higher-volume throughways, where city connections really matter. So a piecemeal sidewalk on West Fifty-Sixth just doesn't fit with the vision. And I'd also say, getting close to closing, that like all plans, they can be improved with more input, our on-the-ground input. As just suggested, option three, we welcome a lane striping option coupled with no parking signs. That was suggested by city engineers. We love it. But a lone sidewalk to us is a lose-lose. We don't see the greater good. It does not add to the city's network goals, and frankly, we get a slab of concrete that takes away ten feet of our small yards and our privacy. I would just say, please amend the resolution to exclude a sidewalk from West Fifty-Sixth. Vote for option three. And we'll save money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keane.
Member of the council, I have two other callers on the line who have not yet testified. Neither of them are in the queue. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak, or if you're calling in just now and would like to get in the queue, please press star one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number one. That will get you in the queue to speak. With that, I have Mr. Bob Vos. Operator, please unmute Bob's line, and Bob, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Thanks very much. Bob Vos, V as in Victor-O-S-E. I live at fifty-eight seventeen Eastview Drive. Eastview Drive, as council may know, is what's been called the Letter Street, where the street that spells out in large letters "Lit Up a Merry Christmas," and you may have driven through, folks drive through during the holiday season. We're proud of the letters that have been handed down to us from, we believe, the fifties, and we're a very cohesive neighborhood, and in fact, during this hearing, the neighborhood has been texting and talking about input that we might give. And I can be very brief about that input. I think we would collectively, I would personally, we would collectively align ourselves with the comments that Mr. La Force made at the beginning. He made three points, and he made them better than I would make them, so I won't try to repeat them. I would just amplify one point that he made, and that is that the relatively large amount of the assessment, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars per residential unit, is large, and the council, I think, almost uniformly or uniformly has recognized that. But that, coupled with the relatively large size of the project area, and the relative to Edina as a whole, the modest lot sizes and lot values, I guess I would fear may lead to more opposition politically and/or opposition legally to the amount of the assessments. And given that you are on the cusp of having a task force that is going to speak to the way the city assesses, we would align ourselves with the comment that waiting for that to happen, particularly since your staff has given you a path forward to do that, we would agree with that and ask you to take the benefit of your task force. Don't impose quite high assessment on a quite large, relatively speaking, project area without the benefit of that task force feedback. And lastly, we very much appreciate the work that the council does for us on this project and others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vos.
I have anyone else in the queue? As a reminder, to get in the queue, you need to please press star one. That's the asterisk key, then the number one, to get into the queue to speak. My clock shows that it's nine nineteen. Oh, I have another speaker. Please unmute the line of Mr. Chris Roffidall. Operator, Chris, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Chris, last name Roffidall, R-O-F-I-D-A-L, five-zero-three-seven, West Fifty-Sixth Street. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so I live on the portion of West Fifty-Sixth Street that was redone in 2012, and at that time, we voted for no sidewalks. Since that time, we've had a lot of new people move into the neighborhood, younger families, and I kind of took the petition, the position with this current proposal, because I had some folks that were on both sides of the issue. I would say more people on the, don't do the sidewalk issue, but I did have friends on the, on the proposed on the side issue, so I kind of took the position of Switzerland by not signing the petition. But I will say this. Here's, here's the problem that I have from a, from a aesthetic standpoint, I guess is the best way to put it. What you're basically doing from the time that you travel from Hanson Boulevard to the frontage road is that you are creating three different widths of our street, and you're creating, I think if I have it right, three different widths of sidewalk. So in some areas, you just have the sidewalk. In other areas, you have the sidewalk plus the boulevard. And then by the time you get down to my area of the street, you, you keep the width of the street the same, and now you encroach ten feet into our yard, which I completely understand is the right-of-way of the city to do that. So from an aesthetic standpoint, it seems like this is not the right street to put a sidewalk on, because you have to make so many changes and so many sacrifices to get to that sidewalk point. And so I think from the standpoint of what I've heard tonight and now reading the packets and kind of going through the particulars of it, I think that option three, even talking over with my wife tonight, is kind of the, is a good option to look at, to stripe the street, make it so that it's walkable for the people that want to do it. I would agree with Mr. Forker's comments and also with Mr. Keane, that we've walked this street for twenty years. It hasn't been, it hasn't been a challenge, and I would, I would strongly encourage you to really take a strong look at how you're going to do this, because all these different sacrifices you're making along this street to accomplish a sidewalk seems like it's kind of burdensome on, on the, on the residents of the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Roffidall.
Member of the council, I have just one more person on the line who hasn't spoken yet tonight. If he would like to testify, I need to remind him to please press star one on your telephone keypad. Otherwise, I would recommend, because there is a slight delay with the broadcast, that we wait just a minute or so in case anyone else would like to call in and get in the queue. My clock shows that it's nine twenty-two, so I will let you know if I get someone in It's down nine twenty-three, so I think you can move on.
Thank you, Director Bennerott. Council, I'm thinking what we should do is consider taking action here and then go back, as we did in the prior hearing, and get some of the questions answered. So is there a motion to close the public hearing on Improvement BA four-fifty-seven, embodied in Resolution 2020-one-thirty? Close that public hearing at noon on December ninth, and then continue that matter for action to the December fifteenth, 2020 city council meeting? Some. All right, we've got a motion second by, motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Fisher. Any further discussion with respect to the motion? Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Brindle.
Hi.
Councilmember Fisher.
Hi.
Councilmember Staunton.
Hi.
Mayor Heflin.
Hi. Motion carries. This matter will be continued to December fifteenth for action by the city council, and the public hearing will remain open until noon December ninth. And we talked previously about the methods in which you can communicate with council through BetterTogetherEdina.org or Calling City Hall, and we'll put you in the correct, on the correct number to be able to leave a message for us. So a couple of questions that popped up, one, a couple of different times, but I think it's probably a more pervasive sort of question, and that was, I think, rooted in Ms. Hawley's concern about, would we be taking ten feet of her yard? I guess two parts. Wide the south side for the proposed sidewalk? And if there was a sidewalk, would you be taking as much as ten feet of her front yard to make that sidewalk possible between the sidewalk and the, and the boulevard itself? Mr. Greer or Mr. Director Milner?
Go ahead, Charlie. You want to take that one?
Yeah, so we will not be taking ten feet of her lot. All the proposed walks in improvements as part of this project are within the city right-of-way. Why the south side? There's a couple of reasons that were outlined by Andrew Scapione, but the biggest one is just cohesiveness of the walk. If we put it on the north side, if we put the walk on the north side, it exits at the railroad track on the very far west side, and that's not, not an ideal safety location, and you don't want to be having it dump into the railroad right-of-way. So that's primarily the largest reason for the south side, is the beginning and end of that railroad track. Also gives us a little bit more room for a secure crossing on Hanson. And then as you head east on the, on the path itself, there are less, on the, on the south side, as you head east, there are less trees and there are less random landscaping obstacles along the way.
All right, so one clarification on the ten-foot question. So the curb and gutter is there today, and it'll look like ten feet of her property, right? I mean, because there's going to be a five-foot boulevard and five-foot sidewalk. So if you went from the existing back-up curb to where the new back-up sidewalk, that would be ten feet. So it would be ten feet, and Charlie just clarified, whose property is it? You know, it's actually city right-of-way, but it, but they maintain the grass that's there and the landscaping today.
Okay. All right, so that, we're not going to, as Member Staunton asked on the last matter, we're not going to move the center point of the roadway. You know, we've done that before. It's, it's going to be pretty much positioned the way Ms. Hawley described, and also, I think, Mr. Roffidall described. It would, it would, it would give them the sense that they were losing ten feet of their yard, even though it's in the right-of-way.
East of code, east of code, that's accurate, probably, because we're not, staff recommendation is to not alter the width of the road east of code. It's an existing road that's not being reconstructed. The, from code to Dale, however, that is newly constructed roads, and we do have the opportunity to split the road and to, to change the center line of the road or to kind of share the, the burden, we'll call it, on the new width of the roadway corridor.
Yeah, there's really two different segments of sidewalk. It's the sidewalk within the full street reconstruction area, and that's west of code. Then there's this piece between code and the frontage road, the east portion, where the road's there, it was reconstructed in 2012. We've offered that one opinion of doing five-foot boulevard with a five-foot sidewalk behind the existing curb, but we also offered a alternate recommendation even for the sidewalk, where you could narrow the street twenty-four feet to limit those impacts that the residents are talking about, but it does increase the cost, and we would have concern with removing all that brand-new curb from 2012, and is that necessary?
All right, yeah, I'm with you. Thank you for that clarification.
Fast follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, go ahead, Member Fisher.
So Chad or Charlie, one of the things that, you know, I've gotten a lot of emails, I'm sure all of us have, and there were comments tonight related to that sidewalk on Fifty-Sixth, particularly the easterly part of Fifty-Sixth that went through that process in, I think it was 2012. And the comments I'm getting is people said, we voted that down as a neighborhood. We decided not to do that. And Chad, I called you today to get clarification on that, and it was really helpful for me to understand, and would it be possible for you to repeat what we talked about? Like, what has changed? Like, there was a whole process, and why is that process not happening today? And sort of the funding of the sidewalks and, and, you know, why we would even open this up again?
Yep. Councilmember Fisher, great question. So prior to 2012 or thirteen, I guess, I don't know the exact year, maybe, I see Manager Neil remembers, but we created the Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund. But prior to that fund being created, we assessed properties for sidewalks. So we did do a questionnaire. We looked at maps and said, it would make sense to put a sidewalk on Fifty-Sixth for all the reasons we've talked about tonight. Reference, what do you think of a sidewalk idea? And you have to pay for it. So typically, we got the results of these questionnaires back, like, we don't need the sidewalk, and we don't want to pay for it. So it was really hard for us to implement any sort of sidewalks because of, of that cost standpoint. And that's where Manager Neil came up with the idea of the PACS Fund, Pedestrian Cyclist Safety Fund, to take that financing mechanism out of assessments because of the benefit of having a connected sidewalk network within Edina. So they did have some feedback on those sidewalks in 2011, a year before construction, and the council at that time decided not to approve them for some of the reasons, because of the cost reasons and maybe some of these other impacts. But now we have a separate dedicated funding source that makes it easier. People aren't going to get charged for that cost. We still struggle with some of these aesthetic concerns, and now we're back again, right? We never want to come back. We never want to come back and do it after the fact. But we thought this is similar to Valley Road where the council and ETC directed us to do it. This would be the same kind of thing as to build that east-west connection between Hanson and the frontage road. Um, and then I see Manager Neil's hand up too, if he wants to add to those.
All right, thank you, Director Milner. Manager Neil?
Yeah, I would just quickly add, uh, to that, uh, that historical context that prior to Mr. Milner, uh, when, when the city did, uh, surveying work, surveying, not, not civil engineering surveying, but surveying as in asking people what they wanted, uh, we really did pose questions to them and they, and they answered back. I'm talking about residents in a project area that sounded very much like we were asking them to vote on things. And so when you have residents, uh, like in this case, who are telling you, we voted on a sidewalk and we voted it down, it felt like that. I know it felt like that to them, because there was a count and the, the city engineer would come to the city council and say, well, we had 48 for it and 25 against it, you know, what do we want to do? And we are, we are more careful these days about how we ask, uh, how we ask residents to articulate their preferences on, on discretionary items. And we, we are very careful not to frame it as a vote for or against something. But we weren't as careful then.
Ruth Ann, Ruth Ann Metzger, who is at 5600 Dale Avenue, uh, has that challenging driveway situation. And then that led her to, and be appreciative of the idea that we were trying to figure out something that made it easier for, for her to get in and out of her driveway with the roadway improvement. But she was also concerned about, uh, dealing with the challenges of, uh, snow and snow removal. What are your thoughts, sir?
Yep, Mayor, members of the council, we've had many discussions on the snow removal question. We don't remove snow on every sidewalk. You know, we do it on MSA or state aid routes. We do it on active routes to school. This doesn't qualify for any of those metrics. So our current policy, this would not be maintained by city forces. Uh, it would be a resident-maintained sidewalk.
Right, but I think, I think her question had to do with the snow that gets pushed on her property today. And, um, where could that snow go so that it's easier to maintain the sidewalk? It's a similar to question to 54th Street.
Yep, so we would have to ask Public Works what their current operations are. You know, if there's opportunities for, if the sidewalk's right on the back of curb, they can really wing that back even farther. Versus if there's a boulevard, then it kind of gets stuck in that middle range. But again, we would build it. And if there's major operational challenges created by Public Works at some of these corners, we would review that and hope they would change their operations.
Okay.
Uh, Member Brindle, keep going.
All right, um, so Chris Rofidal mentioned that 56th Street has like three street widths along the way. Um, I drove it today and it didn't strike me that it had three different street widths. But, um, but does it?
Go ahead, Charlie.
So today, it, it does have some varying street widths. I think what I interpreted from his conversation is that we're proposing this 20-foot wide corridor from, from Hanson to Dale. And then, and that's just the nature of the beast, because the right of way is so narrow. And then we're proposing a 24-foot wide roadway with a 10-foot boulevard and walk combined. So a 35-foot wide corridor through there. And then we're tying into an existing corridor that was reconstructed. So, uh, honestly, I think the aesthetic side of that is pretty minimal. We'll be able to align those streets appropriately, so it won't be a terrible eyesore or anything like that. And I think the average public, besides those of us who design it, will drive through it perfectly fine. And I will be annoyed every time I drive through it for 20 years.
Yeah, um, so there's a comment that we've heard in both of these projects. And that is, this piece of sidewalk doesn't connect to anything. So I'd like, I'd like to get a good answer. Um, because I think I have an answer to that. But I'd like to get a good, um, scope on, why does it make sense to have the sidewalk on 56th Street?
Yeah, and you mean all the way from Hanson to Normandale Boulevard?
Right.
I think Charlie's showing a great graphic. He'll explain.
Yeah.
That question.
So remembering the, this slide that Chad, I and Aaron all hit on for each project here, uh, and got, going back to the guidance from the pedestrian master plan, the connectivity and develop and address gaps. So each of these stars are parks, or this is a school. These circles right here, if you recall, over Highway 100, there are pedestrian bridges with those long spiraling ramps. Uh, the, this is the gap that we're addressing here. Uh, some of the petition comments, maybe not made tonight, but made through emails is, well, you could go up the frontage road, or you could go down the frontage road, or you could cross at Benson, or you could cross at Eden. And they're accurate, you could. If you wanted to go to Highland Lake and you lived over on Oak Drive, you could go up Wilson Road, go down and Trevor's back down and around and up. Uh, I would argue that Eden is a pretty, pretty busy intersection. So maybe that eliminates some, some families wanting to do that. And Benson is also very, Benton is also a very busy intersection. So maybe that eliminates some families. Uh, the most direct route for this person on Oak Drive would be to take one of these pedestrian bridges and use a proposed route on 56th Street and then cross at Vernon. And there would need to be a pedestrian improvement in the future, which is already in the works. We're constantly looking for pedestrian improvements, because we have a proposed walk here. Uh, we're also connecting to Yancey Park, Highland Park. We're connecting to what will be a remodeled, uh, Melody Lake Park. There's also Melody Lake Park down here. I think some of the bigger picture here is we have a large encompassing network and that you can't see the whole picture, right? Uh, we're also trying to connect neighborhoods. That's why these two bridges exist, right? Highway 100 came separated neighborhoods that had existed. And they built, later on, we built these bridges to connect those neighborhoods. And this is just another way to continue that connection from east to the west.
And I would just say, I'd look at the space between Eden and Benton. That's a long ways to walk without any other safe facilities for, again, all abilities and providing those accessible and equitable, uh, facilities for all people. You know, from Benton all the way to Eden, that's a long way. So this is the logical halfway point, kind of similar to the Southdale guiding documents of these blocks, right? These, just think of it, of these pedestrian blocks is what we're creating. So people have options for using networks within Edina.
Sure, sure. Well, thank you, because that's, that's what I, I wanted to bring across is, is that, um, is, is that it's, it's not a sidewalk that doesn't connect to anything.
Does anyone recall from a staff standpoint or council, uh, when we completed that sidewalk on Normandale Boulevard? Because there may, there may have been a time when that piece, uh, where Chris Rofidal and Greg Keen and Judy Holly live were, uh, it didn't really connect to anything. Uh, but now it connects to, uh, Normandale Boulevard on the east. And what I hear staff saying is now you'd have the ability, if we put the sidewalk in place, of being all the way, being able to go all the way from Normandale or somewhere along 56, down to Hanson Boulevard, and then on down to Yancey Park, which we never could do before. So somebody want to address that issue?
I think that's the difference between where we were in 2012.
Yep.
And what was important at that time and where we are today and what's important today. I think our vision is very different today than it was eight years ago.
So Mayor, I don't know, I, that was before I was here. So it was before 2012. So I think that, that segment went in before their street project. But I'd have to look back and we can bring that back to you.
Okay, just, just a thought. It just struck me as we were talking.
It does appear in the 2009 aerial images on the frontage road.
It doesn't appear?
It, it does.
Okay, all right.
Prior to 2009.
What about, uh, this, uh, you know, some of the folks that live in the stretch uh, from code to Normandale that was improved in 2012 are suggesting, gee, option three looks like a, a, a good idea to us if you have to have some sort of, uh, a defined walkability. Uh, we could mark out the, the pavement on the street and all parking on one side. What are your thoughts about this option three? You, you did not recommend it. Uh, would you reiterate why you don't recommend it?
Sure, sure, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the biggest reason is there's not a lot of supporting evidence that actually provides what we're looking for as part of the pet and ma, pet and bike master plan. There's not a lot of literature and evidence that on-street walkways are safer or provide a more comfortable experience. Uh, it doesn't provide any additional benefit to someone that, let's say, has, has low vision and uses a cane for walking. Uh, they, they walk on paths that have defined edges and have the bumps that, at the ADA ramps to identify where they're going. It defines their path for them. Uh, again, someone with a disability not as inclined to want to use the roadway. Uh, it, it doesn't meet the overall encompassing goals of the pet and bike master plan. And sometimes just doing something to do it, it, it isn't the right reason to do it. Um, we would want to do a lot more thorough investigation before we would commit to something like that.
All right, thank you. Did it, uh, other council members hear other, uh, comments or questions from some of the residents who spoke? I tried to take good notes, but I'm not sure I caught everything. Mr. Greer?
Uh, David Prince made a comment, and I wasn't quite sure about his comment, but he made a comment about the cost of sidewalks. And I just wanted to reiterate that the sidewalks and the work associated with the sidewalks is not assessed, that it's paid for out of the PACS Fund.
Yeah, I think actually David Price said he was supportive of the sidewalk on Hanson.
Right, he had concerns about costs. And it, it appears to me that he was concerned about the cost of walkways being in there as well. So.
Oh, okay, I didn't get that out of it, but that's fine. Yeah, thanks for making that point. They, including the cost of the retaining wall. It's out of the PACS Fund.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question.
Member Brindle?
Thank you. Um, so Judith Holly was talking about rather, she'd rather see a shared path. Is that the path that's marked on the roadway? Um, because we referenced a shared path planned in the future for Benton Avenue. So can you define a shared path, please?
I think that's the one she was referencing. She preferred that be built on Benton and nothing on 56. Not a shared path on 56.
That's the way I interpreted her comments too, is she, she supports all improvements for pedestrians on Benton Avenue. Our current plan has a shared use path, which is a wider facility, so it can accommodate both walkers and bikers. But she didn't support that on her street.
That's right.
On Benton. And that's a future project that we don't have, that's a stated route. So again, funding is different and the schedule's different. And we don't have a, a date for that yet.
Okay.
Okay, um, Mr. Greer, Mr. Director Milner, do we miss it, miss anything there? We catch all the questions?
I think so, Mayor.
Okay, well, we'll watch for more correspondents to come in before the, uh, or, you know, after afternoon on the 9th. I guess we'll review everything that comes in, uh, and also watch on, uh, between now and the 9th.
I have one question I forgot to ask about the Creek Knoll project.
Sure, please, go ahead.
Um, so in the staff presentation, we were looking at page 10 or slide 10 of the presentation. And staff commented that they were going to increase the street grade. Would you tell me what that means?
All right, we may have to, just a second, open that PowerPoint to see what was on that slide. I see Aaron's sharing a slide, slide 10. I kind of had to do a stormwater improvement.
It was slide 10. That's what I had written in my note is slide 10.
We got a second to come up and I'm looking at it. It had to do with storm, storm improvements. You typically do a new crown on the road to, to drain from the center line. But maybe Aaron remembers the comments.
I, I think what the intent was there was, there, there's some flat streets there. So we are going to increase the roadway grade, so it's not as flat.
So in other words, it's, it's, I'm thinking the whole thing's going to raise. What you're thinking is you're going to raise the crown.
Um, yeah, essentially, uh, yeah, essentially we're, we're just going to make it a little bit. If it's extremely flat, we'll just make it less flat. So, uh, that's what they, that's what they intended. So it might be raising parts of the street. It might be lowering parts of the street to get better drainage on the overall roadway.
Both, both horizontally, you know, the length of the street, getting that to drain to these new catch basins. So there's going to be lowering of the street near the catch basins and just making it drain better. But then also the crown of the road will be stretched out more to get the water into the curbs, so it can run down to those catch basins. So it'll be a little bit of both to improve drainage.
Okay, I just, I wanted to be sure to get an explanation of that.
All right, anyone else? Now, I just want to let folks be, uh, know before we adjourn, uh, again, a reminder, if you're still listening in, uh, you can leave a voicemail, uh, for the council at 952-826-0377. 952-826-0377. Uh, that's a voicemail box that'll be checked regularly. Or you can send in an email to BetterTogetherEdina.org, and we'll get that information that way as well. Uh, you'll have until, uh, noon on the 9th. And then we will take this matter up on the 15th of December at our regular city council meeting. Do we have anything else, Manager Neil, that you want to address this evening or staff?
Uh, not, not from me, Your Honor.
All right, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Some. Member Fisher moves, Member Brindle seconds. Are any further discussion with respect to the motion to adjourn? Roll call, please, relative to the motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Brindle.
Hi.
Councilmember Fisher.
Hi.
Councilmember Staunton.
Hi.
Mayor Havelin.
Hi. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.